All right. We're going to call to order the City Council regular meeting for Monday, September 20th, 2021. Please rise for the -- what are we doing? For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and roll call, Jamie.
Here.
Jeff Delkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill LaClair.
Here.
Darla LaClair.
Here.
Jay Remeker.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilounis.
Here.
Adam W. Husky.
Here.
All right, consideration of any council member to request to participate in this meeting from a remote location. We do have Bill on the phone here, so we're looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Jeff, second.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy, and we can do an all in favor on that, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, welcome aboard, Bill. Number five, input from the public. If you can please address the council with anything that's on the agenda or anything that you want to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, my right, your left. This is first call. Okay, please state your name and address.
My name is Kay Coach, 24 1134 Street. I wanted to address something on the agenda, and I didn't know if you can do it now or if I have to wait till it comes up.
Probably now would be the best, because otherwise the council has to motion it.
Okay. It's item number F.
Yeah.
You got it?
Got it.
I have, in my background, a lot of military people who did a lot of overseas servings and other things, and many of which did not come back. And I personally take this idea of a sanctuary situation as a slap in the face and don't care for it, and I will fight to not have it go through with everything I have. My only request here is for people, when you are approached with this, don't take the rhetoric of the person talking to you, do your own homework, make a very educated decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish --
Mr. W. Husky.
Yes.
Can you make sure the microphone's got a mic?
Okay, make sure you're talking to the mic. Is that mic on?
Yes, yes, yep. Works.
Yeah.
Got right up.
Yeah.
Okay, please state your name and address.
My name is Bob Dejourlay, 17624 Casmer Road in Michikot. I'm a town board member on the town of Michikot. In all due respects, Kane, while you may or may not agree with what I'm going to talk about today, I appreciate the liberty to express my thoughts to you. I'll preface my comments by saying that I am not an anti-masker or a pro-masker, nor am I an anti-vaxxer or a pro-vaxxer. I believe it's a person's individual choice for their health care. My body, my choice. Having said that, you can now filter my comments through your specification, your specific lens. The country we live in, that we live in now, is not the country I grew up in. In the last 18 months since March of 2020, we were told to wear masks for only three weeks. This created the anti-maskers versus the pro-maskers. Businesses were split into essential and non-essential, causing many businesses never to reopen, which affected people's livelihoods. Freedom to assemble and worship were prohibited. Communication on the web is being removed for being misinformation or not fitting a narrative. Now business owners with more than 100 employees must have their employees vaccinated or face a $14,000 penalty for each person not in compliance. I can guarantee you it will not stop there. Zero to 99 will be next, then pensions and social security will be threatened if we don't get vaccinated. People are in fear over their economic welfare versus their liberties, yes, their liberties, and this is America. Elected officials at all levels of government took an oath of office to protect and honor the Constitution of the United States of America. They are failing. Thomas Jefferson said in his first inaugural address, "A wise and frugal government which shall restrain men from injuring one another, shall leave them otherwise free to regulate their own pursuits of industry and improvement, and shall not take away from their mouth of labor the bread it has earned." This is the sum of good government. Jefferson also said that the two enemies of the people are criminals and government. So let us tie the second down with the chains of the Constitution, so the second will not become the legalized version of the first. I think we need bigger chains. How much time do I have? Three minutes?
I didn't time you, but --
Okay. At this time, there's a movement to pass the resolution declaring localities to be deemed constitutional counties or cities. While it may be symbolic at this time, it sends a message to its citizens that local government is watching and ready to defend its citizens from unjust overreaches of government. I'm asking the city of Two Rivers to consider making the city of Two Rivers a constitutional city and be ready to defend why you would not support this, as you took an oath to defend it. I have samples of information from a county in upstate New York on their constitutional sanctuary statute, their resolution, and also some information on how to find that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? If you can talk very clearly into the microphone, I think he's having a hard time hearing you from his remote location, so do the best you can, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Forrest LaFave. I live at 2112 Lincoln Street in Two Rivers. I'm a constitutionalist, and I'm here to say that I am not for the mandates. I believe in our Constitution. I also want to point out that other counties in the state are already a constitutional sanctuary. Portage County is one of them. The unconstitutional mandates takes us into dictatorship. Do you know what will happen after dictatorship? Do you like your freedom of choice? Do you like being able to speak your own opinion or pick your own religion, or no religion? I know some of you will say this is about the public safety. So is protecting our Constitution. Do you know what will happen after dictatorship? More people will die in a civil unrest than they will of COVID. If we were in a pandemic, why weren't people dying in their homes? And why didn't Manitowoc County experience the same average deaths in 2020 as any other year? It sure sounds to me like someone with a lot of money and a lot of power wants to scare the public so they can push their socialist ideologies on the American way of life. I know some of you will say this is about our health. If that's so, and you're going to blackmail us and try to force an experimental vaccine on us because it's for our health, then I have a few questions. Do you smoke? Do you drink alcohol? Do you exercise on a regular basis? Do you watch TV regularly? Do you eat healthy, or eat candy or drink soda? If this experimental vaccine is about the public's health, then we need to start taking initiative to making our community healthier by mandating people to stop smoking or drinking immediately. No more candy bars, no more chips. Do not let your kids have their tablets or watch TV, because it changes the development of their brain. Let's start mandating daily exercise routines for the community. Being healthier is a lifestyle, and it's also a choice. Having our freedom to choose how we want to live our individual lives is protected by our Constitution. When you took your position in council, you took an oath to protect and uphold our Constitution. With that being said, if you're comfortably in support of the mandates, that means you're against the Constitution. If you are against the Constitution, that makes you a domestic terrorist on American soil. If you will not protect and uphold our Constitution, and all of which it stands for, you need to step down from your position. It literally says in the Constitution that you can be removed from your position. I know some of you might also say our hands are tied because this is what the federal government is pushing on us. No, your hands are definitely not tied. Let me remind you, it's we, the people. We don't work for the government, they work for us. We don't need the government, they need us. It's we, the people, and I am telling you, we, the people, are fed up. Upholding our Constitution isn't an opinion, it is our civil duty. This isn't about Republicans versus Democrats or vaccinated versus unvaccinated, it is about totalitarian versus our Constitution. And all I want is for you all to uphold what you took an oath to protect, our Constitution.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Please state your name and address for the record, please, and talk nice and clearly into the microphone. Thank you.
Don't let this scare you, it's big print for reading purposes. My name is Julie Hart. I live at 3404 Memorial Drive, Two Rivers, Wisconsin. I am a retired military veteran, I served 20 years, and I absolutely support the movement for Two Rivers to stand as a constitutional sanctuary and movement toward Manitowoc County to stand as a constitutional county. Elected officials take an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and Wisconsin State Constitution. Why would there be opposition? I concur with all the points made and the Constitution amendments mentioned in the prepared document that was available for preview, putting this on today's agenda. The facts speak loud and clear to the need for constitutional sanctuary. Government overreach has been creeping up a little here and there, however, it reached to me, in my observation, humble observation, it reached abuse in Wisconsin early in 2020 when one person, the governor of our state, bypassed his legislature and locked the state down after previously indicating to them and the people of Wisconsin, from what I understand, that he was not going to do so even though we were preparing to manage the virus as things unfolded. The governor dictated what businesses would close rather than offer them the same opportunity to adapt as those who were allowed to stay open. That overreaches into the livelihood to the people of this state. For perspective, the state of South Dakota trusted its people to adapt and never locked down. Any business that closed while looking at what would work for them was free to open when ready. I traveled through several states that did not implement such mandates as Wisconsin had, and the communities were doing well, no mask needed either. Regardless of population differences in states, the fact is, the percentage statistics between Wisconsin and other states as far as how the virus was affecting the population, they were all pretty close together, proving the success in these other states versus our governor's overreach that devastated the livelihood of many throughout our area and around the state. Government overreach attempts are continuing. Every American should be deeply concerned that the vaccine for the virus is not a one-size-fits-all medical remedy for everybody. Why aren't they answering to the public for the percentage of people who should not take it due to the risk it poses for their health profile? If government and health departments at all levels are truly concerned about everyone's health, why aren't they promoting a screening process that many medical professionals want? The Biden administration, as well as our state government and health department, ignore this, as well as the historical and science data showing no vaccine ever has or ever will be 100% effective due to each person's unique health condition, risk or not. Also, there has been no concern for the percentage of people who have natural immunity, which is superior to the vaccine, as proven in a recent legal win for an employee against his employer. Add to that the concern for those who do not want the vaccine for their own personal conscience reasons. The virus emergency, how long are we going to let them hang emergency over our heads? It's still due appropriate concern, however, its average recovery rate for some time is around 99%, suggesting we've got this well in hand and it can be managed just like all the other health issues we deal with. Why isn't there a balanced conversation that includes our state and nation top two killers that have staggering mortality numbers compared to the virus? Heart disease and cancer are not contagious, and that's the very point, trending as such for years. The Wisconsin numbers posted by MacGyver Institute in January 21 show the stark reality here in our state. The top cause of death in 2020 was heart disease at 12,440. Second cause of death is cancer at 11,610. COVID mortality in 2020 was 4,870. This does not take away from those lives lost or the appropriate concern that the virus is due, but it does put things in the perspective as to, why aren't we having a balanced conversation about health that includes these top health threats that have far greater numbers? Nationwide, it's also running the same. As per the CDC for 2020, heart disease was 690,000 deaths, a little over that. Cancer came in second at over 598,000. COVID was 345, and we all know the CDC got busted with how they were reporting and separating out who died specifically from the virus versus who died of other causes with it. So to put things in perspective, approximately every 46 seconds, someone in the U.S. dies from heart disease, while the COVID virus has an average recovery rate of 99%. Yet we're being mandated and told, take the vaccine or else? I don't think so. In addition, I and many others have screenshots of mask packaging disclosing that masks do not stop any virus from spreading. The CDC and others that state they may prevent the spread are manipulating words instead of being honest. Many people are coming forward as they now have medical assessments proving mask wearing just to keep their job has resulted in new health issues or aggravating existing conditions. Those who want to wear a mask are free to do so. However, government employees who ignore these facts, that ignore the facts of the repercussions from that, that should alarm everyone. Where's the concern for those lives? Every American should have been alarmed beyond measure when Mr. Biden recently stated that patients was wearing thin and it wasn't about freedom or choice. It isn't about the virus either. Anyone who thinks they are safe from these government overreach attempts is sorely mistaken. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay. If you can please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Wayne Bowley. I'm from 7903 Nadel Road, Whitelaw. My dad was the county board chairman for many years, and he was assembly. I wasn't planning on talking, so I didn't have any notes or anything, but I've been doing some statistics on the COVID, and in May of this year, there were 3 million COVID deaths in the world. United States had just under 600,000 of those deaths. So the percentage of deaths in the world from the United States was almost 18%. It was 17.63%, 4% of the population. Those numbers just don't add up. I just want to say things like that, so people think a little bit, why is there so many COVID deaths, related COVID deaths, in the United States with such a small population, supposedly such a healthy country? Right now, those numbers are just 4,550,000 deaths in the world, there's 670,000 deaths in the United States. That comes up to 14.7%, just under 15%. Those numbers don't make sense. I mean, we should be at best 4%. We're only 4% of the population, we shouldn't even be 4% of the deaths. But those numbers aren't working, and I just think that people need to just think about that. Why are those numbers so high here? Russia's 2%. Other countries are under 2%. Why are we so high? That's all I wanted to throw at you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Shay Sartwell, address 13219 County Road Q, Two Rivers, Wisconsin. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's not everybody who pays attention to what their city council is doing. So this is fantastic that we have so many engaged citizens here in Two Rivers. This is great. So I was invited to come here tonight on this issue, and I thought about it for a while, and as I thought about it, something that was said earlier, that this is not a Democrat or a Republican issue, and it's really not. I believe in the heart of every American is the desire for freedom, is the desire to have our individual freedoms respected and our liberties respected. As a matter of fact, I was contacted fairly recently by a Democratic member of the Milwaukee County Board, who's ready to sue Milwaukee County because, in her view, the mandates in Milwaukee County have been done illegally. And she's looking basically for a legal counsel to help her wage a lawsuit against her own Democratic county, because obviously Milwaukee County is quite Democratic and run by Democrats, and yet she wants to stand up for freedom and liberty in Milwaukee County. This issue, as you consider it, looking back over 200-plus years of America, you ask yourself, why is this coming before the city council? Why would we do this? The idea of a constitutional sanctuary state, or city, or county kind of rose over the last couple of years with the idea basically that there were threats to the Second Amendment. And I wish that was the only amendment that's under threat right now. We've seen threats on the First Amendment where literally we had, from the podium at the White House, where they were literally saying that they were working with big tech companies to censor people. We literally had the President of the United States acknowledging that his order to not allow for eviction was probably illegal, but he was going to do it anyways because it would take a while to work its way through the court, so he'd still accomplish what he was looking to accomplish. We've had his most recent order, which hasn't come out yet, so we haven't seen it for sure, but what appears to be a violation of the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution, where you are securing your persons and your papers against government search and seizure without a warrant sworn by a judge. These are the threats that we're facing. And obviously, the state legislature has done its best to push back on a number of these unconstitutional orders. Once the Biden administration comes out with their official rule, we will be pushing back on that one also through the court system. So why are we talking about this in Two Rivers? There is an ideal that has been in part of the American psyche for over 200 years. It's called the doctrine of the lesser magistrate. I don't know if you've heard it before. But what you may not be aware of, in the Revolutionary War, when we were pushed against the tyranny of Great Britain, it wasn't simply individuals pushing back against the tyranny of Great Britain. It was actually elected officials, colonial elected officials, the generals' assembly of the colonies. And basically, what they said was, when a higher power, the king in this instance, and the parliament of England, failed to do their duty, that duty then fell upon the lower powers, fell upon the colonial governments, to step up for the rights of their people and to save what was right and to support their freedoms. It's a doctrine that's been in place for a very long time, and in fact, is a very Wisconsin, is a very Wisconsin value. And I'm going to finish up with this, as you consider if you're going to do this, and then consider a template. It was mentioned there was a county out in New York, it's fine, but I recently pulled up something from Wisconsin history. In the late 1850s, soon after we became a state in fact, it was either 58 or 59, I can't remember the exact year, where the state of Wisconsin told the federal government that we will not follow your mandate. And in this instance, what it referred to was the Fugitive Slave Act. In 1850, 1859, Wisconsin was a free state, and we had slaves coming north escaping from the south. And the federal government determined that that slave that had been captured should be returned to the south. And the state of Wisconsin, the state legislature passed a joint resolution defying the federal government, telling them that the state of Wisconsin would not be complicit in taking the inherent God-given rights away from the people, the right of freedom. That is a Wisconsin, we're the only state that's really successfully done that and said, we will stand for the rights of the people. So it's a very Wisconsin principle. And I ask you to consider that, as you consider whether you're going to move forward with this resolution, that it is your duty, as well as mine, as well as every elected officials, to uphold the rights enshrined in the Constitution, stand up for the rights of the people that you represent. I know those are your values. Now we have to act on them. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay, moving on. Down to number six, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Does any council member have anything they would like to share?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Bonnie.
I think we're starting to, this isn't as important, I guess, as what was just discussed, but I think we're starting to have a stray animal problem in our city. My neighbor, oh, I gotta, never mind, I'm not going to tell that, I didn't mean to identify the person. She's not a problem, but she wants people in the city, this is, want to feed cats, for example. And I personally think that might become a problem. I was just wondering, Chief, if I could talk to you about this, if you would tell me, not now, but you know, later. The thing is, the Humane Society won't take them. So then I don't understand why we have a contract with the Humane Society, number one, if they're not taking, well, they might take them from the police, but this neighbor did call up and asked --
That was my look of confusion, because yes, I thought, I agree, Bonnie, we have an agreement. Sorry.
And I thought the agreement was for everybody. I didn't think it was only if the police found them, well, they don't go looking for them, but only if the police brought them in. I didn't think it was that way. I thought it was for anybody. And I just, to me, this is becoming, going to become a problem. And even for people, I know they don't want to put animals down, but at the same time, I don't want to see these cats hit by a car and be injured and not die and suffer till they do die. Or the freezing cold, I've lived in cities where the cats have no ears because they froze off. And I just, I'll just say that, if somebody out there is listening and you think you have ideas on what to do, contact me, or I will say, contact the chief. Is that okay? The police department? That's it.
Can we address that? We do have a contract with Humane Society.
I was going to suggest, council member, what, you can follow up certainly with Chief Colmeyer. We can get a report back to City Council, maybe preliminarily at the work session next Monday, but then again, when we have our next televised meeting, which will be the first Monday in October. We do have a contract. Chief, give me the nod, know if I'm wrong, but the Humane Society is to take stray animals turned in by residents or the police department from either Two Rivers or Manah to walk. And you're right, not to mention, because I get passionate on this, stray cats destroy huge numbers of songbirds and wildlife roaming around loose.
The Humane Society told her they were full. So I don't want people to think they're refusing them, but they said they were full, so I'm just --
That seems tantamount to a refusal, and I know, I don't know a lot, but I do understand they have folks that do fostering to help supplement their facilities. So we will get a report, Mr. W. Husky, back on the next agenda. Why don't we make it at the latest, the first meeting in October, which will be the next regular meeting?
That sounds fair and gives us enough time.
Okay, and the clerk will note that, as she always does, so I don't slip up. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jeff?
I got a conversation with a woman, and she was complaining about, again, golf carts, kids hanging out the back, not sitting, and it's just relatively dangerous.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. On to number seven, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. We'll open it up to council first, and then we'll move on to A. So does anyone else have anything to report? From boards, commissions, or committees, there on Mark?
Mr. President, I'm a member of the Room Tax Commission and the Visitors Board of Directors for Manitowoc Tourism Board, and I just want to report that, excuse me, on September 8th, the Room Tax Commission received a letter from Mayor Nichols, basically saying that the city of Manitowoc Room Tax has dissolved their contract arrangements and will be selling the visitor center location and asking the visitor center to be vacated, current board operations to be vacated by December 31st. He also indicated that he'd like to have another joint meeting with the Two Rivers Room Tax, which really kind of surprised us as a member of the Room Tax, because we have been negotiating him with them and the city of Manitowoc on the contract all along, and out of the blue, he eliminated the arrangement completely, told us about the center being sold, and they have to leave by the 31st, which is a total surprise. I think it also is a loss to tourism, it's a disappointment. The Two Rivers has always felt that we could work something out agreeable with the city of Manitowoc, which we were trying to do and actively engaged in when we got this latest news. I think we were better off together, two cities. I think we were better off together, two cities, to promote tourism. It's a big attraction, a big impact, and we see all the benefits locally of Two Rivers of what increased tourism has done to our community, not only with the record-breaking room tax collections we're achieving right now because of all the events and activities. And I think, I'm going to turn to Greg and supplement to my commentary, because you're also involved. Do you have anything else you want to add on my comments, Greg?
Sure. And I had shared with council earlier my email to Mayor Nichols, as well as Mayor Nichols' email about the action by the Manitowoc Room Tax Commission. Just backing up what Mark has said, because I was involved 15 years ago when Two Rivers and Manitowoc came back together as partners to promote tourism. We're coming to the end of our third five-year agreement, where we each ship about 52% of our room tax revenue to the Visitor Convention Bureau for area-wide promotion. And I just want to, and I think you know this, I want to say that Two Rivers, and that goes to our council reps, Mark is our council rep to the Visitor Convention Bureau, and my office and the city attorney, have worked hard to fashion a new agreement. There were some things Manitowoc definitely wanted coming into this process. We thought some of them were disrespectful of the role of the Visitor Convention Bureau and its legitimate independence as a 501(c)(6) organization created to do tourism promotion in the area. Manitowoc got a lot of the things that it wanted, yet still, two weeks away, walked away from the process by effectively saying, we refuse to negotiate with one of the three parties to this agreement. So that's unfortunate. And as Mark said, it's a consensus of our Room Tax Commission, which has three council members, myself and Jim Van Lannan Jr. from the Lighthouse Inn on it, that we strongly disagree with that position and would hope Manitowoc would return to the table on that. I might add that in trying in good faith to fashion a new agreement, it was Two Rivers that, on April 13, at our first joint meeting with the councils and, or representatives of the Room Tax Commissions, excuse me, and the Visitor Convention Bureau Board, said, we don't just need to critique what the Visitor Convention Bureau has done or hasn't done after the fact, we need to roll up our sleeves and engage in joint strategic planning with the Visitor Convention Bureau Board, make clear what our common goals are, set the metrics for them, and then sit down annually, or here, back two or three times a year, as to how are we doing? How are we doing in pursuing those goals? That wasn't in the draft agreement that got sent to us by the city of Manitowoc a few weeks ago. We made a point to say this needs to be added back in. So we are disappointed. I don't think the average visitor sees an invisible line at Woodland Drive that divides the two communities. We both bring a lot to the table in terms of the attractions that this area offers to visitors. So we'll see where it goes from there. Mark and I did get copies of letters today that had gone to the Manitowoc Room Tax Commission, one from the Destinations Wisconsin, which is the Association of Visitor Convention Bureaus, if I understand that correctly, and also from the Wisconsin Hotel and Lodging Association, pointing out that there is a statutory obligation of communities in spending their room taxes, that they spend the money either through a local room tax commission or forwarded to a tourism entity. And if that tourism entity has been around since a certain year, I believe 1985, there's an obligation to contract with the entity. Doesn't say how much money you're going to send to them, but there's supposed to be a contract for sharing those resources. Similar statutory requirements were pointed out in a letter from Laura Stecker, the current Visitor Convention Bureau Board Chair, that went to Mayor Nichols and the commission today. You know, we're on the verge of seeing the National Marine Sanctuary not just become reality in the Federal Register, but get implemented with facilities, with programs on the ground. I think it's fair to say, we in Two Rivers had thought that approaching that as partners with our neighbor to the South was a good thing. So that's not where we are right now. We're obviously, as a commission, looking at a Plan B, because we can't just sit here and pretend that everything's going to be hunky-dory. The communication from Manitowoc two weeks ago indicates anything but. I guess the only thing, other thing I would note is that John Bruner, one of the Manitowoc common council members, did send an email to Mayor Nichols, the Manitowoc Room Tax Commission, and our Room Tax Commission members last week, indicating his concerns about the decision. He doesn't sit on the Manitowoc Room Tax Commission, but on their common council. And John, who I think a lot of us know pretty well, expressed his disappointment and his sincere hope that the Manitowoc Room Tax Commission would revisit the issue. So there's not unanimity among the council in Manitowoc on this either.
Greg, the only thing I want to add to that is, I'm going to correct your term "wanted", Manitowoc wanted, it was more, the mayor demanded, right? He was really...
The mayor demanded, and the votes have been there to back his position.
And the Room Tax Committee of Manitowoc did support the mayor's demands. The other thing I want to add is that it also included in that letter from the Visitors Board is the fact that they intend to continue operations. There's still questions on how they're going to do it, because they don't have a home anymore. There's some options out there available to them, I think, at this point, but they do intend to continue operations until their cash reserve fund does replenish or gets liquidated. So it'd be interesting to see what does happen. I think Two Rivers needs some element of tourism. I'd like it to be together, but it's something we'll have to consider.
And even as we look at our Plan B, there's nothing, in my mind, that stops us from trying to work, to continue working with that existing 501(c)(6) organization, which does have, at least per their last audit, over $300,000 in the bank in tourism resources. So, and actually, we're, understand, both cities are obligated to keep sending, again, just over 52% of our room tax revenue to the VCB through December 31st of this year. We're having a record year. We're going to exceed $200,000 in room tax revenues. That means we're shipping over $100,000 to the Visitor Convention Bureau. Manitowoc's having a heck of a year. They realized over $100,000 in room tax revenue in July. So something's breaking right in the way of tourism and visitor activity, or we wouldn't be seeing these kinds of numbers. And in Two Rivers, honestly, they've been particularly good, as we share with you just about every month. So, thank you.
When you say that there's a state statute that says they have to send money if there's a visitor in Convention Bureau, but it doesn't state how much?
Correct.
So if they come back and say they'll send 5%, does it say what representation they get on that board?
No. No, I'm confident it doesn't. There's the need to have an agreement. I don't think the statute says anything, and Jack's checking real quick here, as to what you might send or not send to that regional entity.
What happened to the 70% going somewhere?
Okay, there was a change in state law in 2017, and it was pushed by the lodging industry and the Association of Visitor and Convention Bureaus, that a certain percentage of your room tax had to go to tourism promotion. But again, that allows for those dollars, 70% might be about right as the number. It's based on what you historically kept as a city for non-tourism purposes. Where was I going with that? It, sorry, lost my train of thought there. It doesn't, it allows you to go one of two routes. You can be spending that money through your local room tax commission, which we established in 2017 after that change in law, or we could be spending all of our room tax money, if the room tax commission saw fit, through a regional entity. There's a provision in the law about having an agreement with a tourism organization, but to Adam's point, you just made it, again, it doesn't require a specific dollar amount or percentage. Yeah.
Jeff? What are the differences that the two committees can't come to terms on?
We have only been told by Manitowoc as a rationale for their decision that it's based on the Visitor Convention Bureau's response to an RFP, a request for proposals the city put out in April of this year, which we understand the Visitor Convention Bureau was the only respondent to, and...
Legitimate respondent.
Yeah, and the, and what they view as the progress to date in our negotiations. I think there are some reasons that are unsaid there, that frankly, get into what ought to be the purview of the Visitor Convention Bureau. And I'll leave it at that. I shouldn't speculate on what Manitowoc is.
Well, I think it's fair to say, though, too, is there were questioning, Manitowoc, mayor or room tax, was questioning the board itself and how they were operating, and they wanted to have more control of the board, and there was a difference in membership. And that kept changing a little bit from the April meeting we had originally. Our final response, and back to Manitowoc, was we wanted more about the location of where Manitowoc's going to relocate the visitor center. And we also wanted to know, is there a fee that they have to pay the city of Manitowoc for a center? Their previous cost was zero cost. Is the condition of building suitable to move in immediately? Or is there money that the room tax has to pay? And we also asked Manitowoc, too, to change a clause that's not beneficial for Two Rivers, but in rough numbers, we contribute 30%, and Manitowoc is the majority, and they contribute 70. Well, there's a clause in the contract saying that the reserve fund, which now has grown thanks to the management of the Room Tax Commission through grants and revenues from the two cities, has grown to like $300,000. There's a clause in the contract saying if that contract is liquidated in any fashion, all the collectible money will go to Manitowoc for, so in other words, our last response was, we think maybe that closure should include a fair, equitable split of collections, as how it was recently collected. And they didn't respond to us, and they just simply said, it's not...
Basically, they want it all.
Well, it...
We tend to think there's some control issues that aren't particularly respectful of the Visitor Convention Bureau or the city of Two Rivers, to put it bluntly. By the way, just one clarification to Mark's point, the distribution of the cash, excuse me, cash assets of the Visitor Convention Bureau, it provides that any remaining cash go to Manitowoc in the event it ceases, the VCB ceases operations. Now, that may be a little bit of a gray area, but it's not about the three-party agreement coming to an end, as I view it, anyway. It's about the VCB, the Visitor Convention Bureau of ceasing operations. So I believe it would require an action of the VCB board to say, we're shutting down, or we're shutting down and liquidating. We're not going to promote tourism anymore, to prompt that language. But we've wanted it changed because, you know, if Two Rivers, let's say, has been 25% of the total revenue, room tax revenue, flowing in since we joined up 15 years ago, whatever that number is, we could calculate it, close to that, probably, we think, whatever the growth has been in the organization's fund balance since we joined up 15 years ago, ought to be, on a pro-rata basis, made to be open to Two Rivers.
It'll be interesting to see, too, because specifically, the board said they intend to continue operations even without Manitowoc's engagement in the contract. So it'll be interesting to see how this turns out. It's a mess. It's not the kind of thing that two communities want to be involved with, because tourism is such an important industry for both our cities.
You know, just in case you hear it, you heard it here first, and have probably read it, the, you know, Manitowoc did, through the mayor's email, in addition to saying, we don't, we refuse essentially to engage in any further negotiations with the MEVCB and don't want to have a contract that includes them, they did invite the Two Rivers Room Tax Commission to meet jointly, just the two room tax commissions. And that proposal or request was politely declined by unanimous vote of our Room Tax Commission. And although Mr. Andrews was off the commission at the, because he had resigned as council president at the point that vote came, Kurt did express that if he had a vote, that was his position as well. So it isn't that Two Rivers is sitting there with its arms folding, saying, we won't meet, but it was rather, we've been working hard on this the better part of this year as three parties, and we don't agree to the idea of throwing the VCB out the window or shutting down any engagement with them.
And again, that was the reason we had three parties talking to each other. And elimination of the tourism board, as it stands right now, lost their home, everything else, that's why we didn't want to continue the discussion with them, because what are we going to do?
Stay tuned, because obviously, that's a critical consideration. It's part of our overall economic development. I guess, one, if I could, one other comment. You look at some of the funding opportunities that are coming down from the state, sharing some of this federal money, that we're still figuring out where it's being spent. A lot of them speak in terms of regional destination marketing organizations or regional tourism. When the state's putting an emphasis, we want to help fund people that are working together to promote tourism, where we're coming apart. And that's, I don't think that's real smart at this point in time with that emphasis on working together.
Okay. Thank you for the update, and stay tuned. There'll be more to come as our Room Tax Commission works through this very vital issue here. On to number eight, city managers' report. Greg?
No invited guests tonight, but I'll run through my report fairly quickly. 24th Street is still finished. I reported that last time. We will be talking with the Public Works Committee on October 6 about tree planting for along the street, where staff is currently getting quotes on tree planting for either this fall or next spring, and we'll report that back through the Public Works Committee and then proceed on to council. 25th Street reconstruction is essentially completed, underground utilities and the paving work. Madison Street, which was included in the same contract as 25th Street, utility work is expected to be wrapped up by the middle of this week. The grading and paving operations are set to begin the week of the 27th, next week, and we do expect that paving and restoration operations will continue well into October, all weather-dependent, of course, from here on out. But once that's wrapped up, these three projects are about $4 million worth of infrastructure work, replacing about 100 lead water service laterals in these older neighborhoods, a pretty hefty investment as far as street reconstruction. Staff also wants to be in a position by the Public Works Committee meeting the first week in October to talk about street reconstruction activity for the next two years, looking out there, and certainly on the dock at our discussions of 17th Street from the bridge to the beach and Roosevelt Avenue. And both of those, you know, they're old streets with old utilities underneath them, would be complete reconstructs. We also want to look at how to best take advantage of funding that's out there for more lead lateral replacement without creating excessive costs for the city and getting that done at the same time. And as I've shared with Darla, as chair of the Public Works Committee, and I think staff has shared with her committee, the other concern is, if we bite off too much in the way of projects, are the materials going to be there? Because the contractors for these projects that are just getting wrapped up had to really hustle out there to find enough shut-off valves and other pieces of infrastructure to get the jobs done. That's a little bit scary, as supposedly, there's a lot more infrastructure money flowing from the federal government to the states, to the locals. Is the supply chain going to keep up with it? So we need to be mindful of all of those things as we move ahead. Central Park West Project, the Citizen Planning Committee's most recent meeting was last Wednesday, the 15th. They continue to look at some of the outstanding design issues, which also, of course, are related to cost estimates. You've got their minutes from that September 15 meeting in your packets tonight. They're looking at addressing size, design, and location configuration of the band shell, and equally important, the audience area in front of it, because there's general consensus, you don't want to lose the size of the audience you can accommodate for special events, especially some of the bigger ones. Revisiting the proposed elimination of West Front Street in front of the community, West Park, I'm sorry, Park Street in front of the community house, there was some dialogue on that at the last meeting, and a recommendation to at least keep a 12-foot-wide area that could be north-south pedestrian access, or if some bollards or other obstructions are removed, could accommodate at least a one-way traffic flow or vehicles getting to the building for deliveries or servicing. Location and design of the concessions and restroom building that's proposed, size and location of the splash pad, there were some other issues that are in the minutes. The committee has requested a special joint meeting with the city council on Thursday, September 30th, to review design issues, notably the proposed use of West Park in front of the community house, because, got to understand, the final decision of the council on that drives a lot of design considerations. That request for a possible special meeting with that group is on tonight's agenda. You'll take it up in a little bit. The committee also has its next regular meeting as a committee set up for Thursday, October 21. And all those meetings are noticed, they are public meetings, public is welcome to attend. In the area of fundraising, the West Foundation, at its September meeting, approved a $300,000 grant in support of the project. So even at the current conceptual cost estimate of $1.8 million, and that is just a concept at this point... at this point, that is fully one-sixth of that amount. So I would say not bad for a project that hasn't officially started fundraising yet. And there have been $7,500 in private donations received so far. I hope at the next council meeting, the work session meeting next week, to bring you names for a fundraising committee to function separately, but with some overlap with the design committee. If people out in the public are interested in learning more about the project, I'd just point out that there are a number of renderings like those that you see on the right of this slide, which this one happens to be summer and winter views from the southeast. If you were like on the roof at Schrader's looking down, you can go to the city's website, tworivers.org for some narrative and various renderings on the project. Recent events, kudos to Two Rivers Main Street and the wonderful sponsors, as well as the participating vendors and entertainers for Ethnic Festival. We didn't skip a year with Ethnic Festival with COVID and everything else. And once again, it, we didn't have as many vendors as in past years, but it was nice to see a large crowd of people out enjoying downtown Two Rivers this past last, this past Saturday. Lot of positive comments from people I talked to that were in attendance. So kudos to Main Street. And I've got to get a little plug in on this next one. The TR Historical Society in tandem with Ethnic Festival did their Chairs for Repairs event. They solicited various types of artwork, custom decorated chairs. There were 55. And from the website, or Facebook page for the Historical Society, they raised $4,500. Kudos to the police department on the chair that they designed and donated. And I'm, I'm really happy to have been the high bidder on the City of Two Rivers chair that Carol Grooman Hodeck, who grew up in Two Rivers, lives in the Green Bay area now, designed and donated. It's a way cool graphic with the view of Rogers Street and the Sundays. And I hope to display it at City Hall for people enjoy it, to enjoy. It's a pretty cool piece of artwork. So thanks to the Historical Society and Bridgette Van Ginkel, who chaired the event, for bringing something fresh and new to the weekend and at the same time raising some money for the Historical Society. Tomorrow, would remind people tomorrow, I cut part of the day off there, but tomorrow, Tuesday, September 21, is the Fall Recycle Event at Two Rivers Water and Light down by McDonald's on Lake Street. Starts at 7:30 in the morning to 5:00 PM. Just drive up and our employees down there will be happy to assist you with unloading whatever you have. There are charges for a number of the items you might want to bring by, like incandescent light bulbs, fluorescent bulbs, compact fluorescents, LEDs. There's no charge for a number of items like non-PCB containing ballasts, rechargeable batteries, they will charge you by the pound for those alkaline batteries. And, and there is a charge for televisions at 15 bucks, dehumidifiers and room air conditioners at $5. No charge for things like microwaves, VCRs, computers, laptops, printers. Also for mercury containing items like relays, thermostats, thermostats, thermometers, excuse me, thermostats, et cetera. Good chance to get a lot of that clutter out of your house and make sure that it's disposed up properly in keeping with environmental standards. And kudos to TR Water and Light for sponsoring that. It's amazing the amount of stuff that gets turned in each year. Also upcoming, the Two Rivers Senior Center Open House fundraiser, September the 23rd, that's Thursday of this week, 4:00 to 6:00 PM. There are tours at the center, door prizes, a bake sale, food and beverage available for purchase. And the first 50 people to enjoy dinner will get a goodie bag, because the open house does include a spaghetti and meatballs dinner. Good chance if you're not tied up with a meeting that, that night for local elected officials or state elected officials, I know we have one in attendance, to turn out. We're also, as the senior center reopens fully with its programming and congregate meals, important that we invite, we, there's, there's people that maybe hadn't thought about the senior center before that now have retired and would be interested. So encourage people to get out and enjoy that open house. We would just remind people that for Two Rivers community events, the most complete up-to-date site is explore2rivers.com. By the way, remember that Apple Fest returns on Saturday, October 9. That's now sponsored by the combined Mantowoc Two Rivers Lions Club. We no longer have our own Lions Club, but there is a combined club with City of Mantowoc. If you subscribe to Netflix or have access to somebody's password, which half the world does, no, I have access to Netflix, the Frank Lloyd Wright-designed home on Adam Street and the East Twin River Still Bend is featured on the season two premiere of the world's most amazing vacation rentals on Netflix. There's some fantastic footage of our community. It's, this is good for this national landmark property that is an overnight vacation rental, one of the few Wright-designed homes that is available for rental. And honestly, it's great exposure for Two Rivers. So we thank Michael Ditmer and his brother, the owners of Still Bend, and everybody involved in pulling this together. I think Mr. Bittner might have had a role in some of the waterborne support for the filming.
I was, I was driving the boat that photographed the boat in front of me.
There you go.
I didn't have, it was my minimum contribution. But I do encourage the community to look at it, because it's a wonderful, wonderful statement of positive results for our community. And I'll tell you that the other homes on there are, what they charge per night is unbelievable. And so it's just a real tribute to our community and it's a great review of our facilities.
Pretty incredible property right in, right in our own town. Would just, whoa. Would just remind council members that the ribbon cutting and commissioning event for the Point Beach Solar Energy Center is this week, Thursday, the 23rd. Attendees, council have all received invitations to it, attendees are urged to be there by 10:00 AM for a 10:30 program. The 100-megawatt solar generating facility out there is actually, was constructed and is owned by NextEra Energy, the owners also of our Point Beach Nuclear Plant. It was, has been constructed on, based on a 20-year power purchase contract with WPPI Energy, which is the wholesale energy supplier for Two Rivers and 51 other municipal electrics in Wisconsin, Iowa and the UP. The facility consists of 315,000 photovoltaic panels. They cover over 465 acres in the town of Two Creeks. And WPPI has noted in some of the press material for this that compared to a base year of 2005, WPPI Energy is on track to reduce its carbon emissions by 45% by the year 2025. So over two decades, a 45% reduction in its carbon emissions. I would note its portfolio also does include purchasing power from the Point Beach Nuclear Plant, which I think we all love dearly and recognizes a big part of the economic foundation of our area. So I don't know if council members have done reservations individually, we can still get them in. Could I ask for an indication, show of hands? You're taken care of. Okay. Bonnie?
At mine yet.
Okay. Very good. We'll see you out there.
I'm out of town, so otherwise I'd like to...
Okay. If any of you, I'm sure they can accommodate you if you freed up at the last minute. Tracy?
Lisa sent that, out an invitation to everybody's...
That's right. Okay. Thank you.
And that's what I responded to.
Okay. Then she took care of it. Yep. Okay. Thank you. The folks over at the Hamilton Wood Type Printing Museum wanted me to get the reminder out that the annual Ways Goose Conference is November 5th and 6th. I understand this has historic origins in the printing industry. They'd have this big celebration as they started relying more and more on candlelight as the days got shorter and they wrapped it up with roasting a goose, I think. I don't think I made that up. I think that's where I read it. But it's a major conference, actually usually with folks from all over the country and all over the world, at least in pre-pandemic years, in attendance, usually a few hundred people. Event registration is now open online at the Wood Type and Printing Museum's website. And there are scholarships for attendance at the conference available to local residents and to students. Wood Type really does a great job, not just telling the story of Wood Type and the Hamilton Company, but the story of Two Rivers. And so we would encourage local residents as well as if you know students, high school or college students that might be interested in graphic arts or the history of Wood Type attending this. There's a, a link there, it's not showing up as a link, I guess, for the scholarships or you can, or you can go to the Facebook page for Wood Type and find some information there. If you look at Facebook tonight, at least it says tomorrow, the 21st is the cutoff. I talked to Stephanie Carpenter over at Wood Type today. They're setting a new deadline sometime in mid-October, so there's at least a good two weeks to apply for scholarships if anybody wishes to. Lisa in our office, Lisa Keen, my assistant, wanted to share the last seven days, some of the analytics from our City of Two Rivers website. And I think this also bleeds over into Explore Two Rivers. But top areas for inquiries, Parks and Rec Services at 151, Parks and Rec generally at 139, Apple Fest coming on October 9th, 138. Events, 127, Police Department, 107. Assessor, because oftentimes people go there to look up property assessment records, 103. Ethnic Fest, 102. Agendas and minutes, part of that is the city clerk and Lisa accessing it to see if the software is working right, at 95, and then various departments. So we're hoping to improve on that and routinely share some of the Google analytics as far as what's happening through our, through our website. And that, thank you. That's my report for tonight.
Anything under intergovernmental and legislative update?
No, I guess the main thing, again, in the intergovernmental category would be what we talked about earlier with the Visitor Convention Bureau. That's all I can think of for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Onto the consent agenda. A is a presentation of minutes. We have the regular city council meeting for September 7th, 2021. Motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, reports, we have 10 minutes of meetings. We have 10 department reports. Motion to receive and place on file. Under C, we have applications and petitions. We have an application for a temporary Class B license for the Two Rivers Rotary Club, Rotary Rally, October 9th, 2021, Woodland Dunes Event Center. We also have an application for a special event beer garden permit for Tapped on the Lakeshore for it looks like a CASA fundraiser on October 3rd, 2021. Recommended motion is to approve that. And the overall consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda with various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended.
Thank you, Jay, and a second.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
And Mark, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Any discussion, we...
Oh, sorry, discussion, correct. Discussion.
I'd like to just, every month we receive a lot of documents from reports from every department. And it's really interesting to read because we, the regular community, as you can see, they really work hard and they're doing a lot of things. And I just want to point out, two departments I want to give special credit to, because I don't think we always realize this, but first, Parker Recreations, they've been very busy. They do a lot of things for the community, attracting a lot of people from outside of the community. And if I look at the, specifically the Hamilton Community House, credit to Terry and her staff, they've had in the month of August, over 9,799 people go through that. So that's a lot of activity in that building and thank you. It's really a positive thing for the community. The second thing is, I'm amazed that, reading the report from the Police Department, they're always busy. First of all, July alone, they had 944 calls. So a lot of activity during that month, it's 31 days. Secondly, the amount of training that they continue to do behind the scenes that we don't recognize that's in these reports, is really impressive to make them a good staff, organization even better. And thank you for that. And then lastly, I see some information about the K-9 funding, and maybe Brian, you could add to us. I encourage the community, there's ways to contribute to that. It's a great cause. Can you give us an update quickly on how we're doing on that?
Thanks. Thanks for all the compliments regarding the work that we're doing in our monthly reports. Very much appreciated. I know our staff appreciate those comments as well. They do work very hard and one of the things that we're working hard at is our K-9, getting our K-9 program up and running. I am pleased to say with some of the donations that we know will be coming in, that we'll be hitting close to the 80% mark. And with hopefully some grants that might put us over the top, but that's a crossing our fingers. So, so a lot of good things there. Some of the things that we are doing, of course, we're selling T-shirts, of course, we're taking in donations. So if anybody wants to donate, they're more than welcome to send a money, check money order to the Two Rivers Police Department. You can make those out to the City of Two Rivers or Two Rivers Police Department. Very thankful for all the folks that have donated thus far. The overwhelming majority, really, probably about 70, or I should say about 50% of all that money has come from just average citizens, some large, some small donations, but really from, from most of the citizens. And then, of course, our service organizations that have helped out as well. So a big thank you to everybody that's donated thus far. We also have been doing a couple of nights for, kind of commonly referred to as dying for K-9 or K-9 dying. We were at Port Sandy Bay last Wednesday and thanks to them for, for sharing a portion of the proceeds from their sales that night to our K-9 program. On October 16th, Sunday, October 16th, out at Point Beach State Forest, we will be doing a breakfast. Optimus Club is sponsoring that. So some of the proceeds from that breakfast that morning will come to our K-9 program and I'm sure we'll sell T-shirts out there as well. We have some plans on the horizon with working with Scare USA to do a night or two or a day with them. And, and we have some other feelers out there with some other local restaurants as well. So that's kind of another phase that we're getting into. What we look to do in the future is get a different style T-shirt once we find out who, what the dog is and the dog's name. Also a shout out to, I should say, Lucky Paws up on 45th Street. They've been doing a really good job of selling T-shirts for us, so we thank them. And we'll get plush toys that look like the dog or close to the dog with the dog's name on it. That'll be upcoming. We'll be doing some other benefits and things into next year, so there's some plans there. So we're doing, doing quite a bit. And like I said, we, we wouldn't be able to do any of this if it wasn't for the support of the community and of course, the council to add this as one of the programs that we hope will be along for a very, very long time. We hope to have the dog on board and out on the road, say around February of 2022.
Great. Thank you for the update. All right. Onto city council formal items. Under A, we have an ordinance to amend the municipal code, section 6-2-8, entitled Temporary Operator's License, to match the Wisconsin statutes 125.174B, to allow up to two temporary operator licenses per person, per calendar year. The motion is to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff, thank you. Stand a second.
I'll second.
Bonnie, discussion. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Jamie?
Mark Bittner?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Jay Remicker?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under B, we have an ordinance amending section 6-11-10B of city ordinances pertaining to membership structure of the city's Room Tax Commission. That is page 68 in your packet if you're looking to read that over. The motion is to waive reading and adopt the ordinance.
If I might, Mr. President, by way of introduction on this, Room Tax Commission, as we talked about before, is a five-member body. The ordinance adopted by the council back in 2017, setting the membership, said the Room Tax Commission will be the council president, two council members, excuse me, the city manager, and a representative of the local lodging industry. And actually, the two council members, it could either be two council members or at the council's discretion, two members of the general public. They all serve one-year terms. So this comes up every year at the first meeting in May, when you do different committee and commission appointments. With Kurt Andrews' recent resignation from council, he had expressed an interest in continuing to serve on the Room Tax Commission. Kurt's been a vital and active member of that and... Kurt's been a vital and active member of that, and also, as council president at the time, had, had been part of the team representing the city in our discussions with Manitowoc and the VCB. So in, in talking with Council President Wuhusky, he was, I think it's fair to say, in agreement with the concept of Kurt being able to serve, Adam perhaps taking a pass for the balance of this term anyway, on serving on this commission. So there, there might be different ways to skin that cat, but the ordinance amendment that's in front of you, and the, the new language as to how the board is composed is in yellow there, would still have the city manager on it, would still have the council president, except if the council president chooses not to serve on the Room Tax Commission, and either he or she says that upfront at the meeting where those appointments are made or at any point during the year, then in that instance, the council president could designate another member of this body to serve on the Room Tax Commission until the end of his or her term. And then you'd still have two additional members that can either be council members or members of the public, and one representative of the hotel and, well, of the, of the lodging industry, the hotel and motel industry. Now, I had inserted on that last one a requirement that it be the owner or manager of a lodging facility with at least 10 lodging rooms, meaning a hotel or motel, as I think most of us know it in, in normal terminology, as opposed, say, to the owner of a single room, or, not a single room, but a, a single property vacation rental, say. But in talking with the city attorney after the agenda was pretty well out, because I didn't think to ask him before that, Jack did point out that in the statute, help me out there, hotel or motel industry does include.
It includes just about any, any manner of, of rental or, or use of, of a room for purposes of occupancy for a fee, it includes tourism houses, tourist houses, they call. So it's, it's a very broad definition of hotel and motel.
So just to point that out, right now, the way it's written, it really limits it to five properties in the city, the things we would call hotels or motels. You could strip that out of there and say it could be a representative of any, of any lodging facility. But the thought as far as the membership at this point, because we, we have that lodging representative who would stay, but if the council approves this tonight, at the next meeting, if he wishes to, Mr. Wuhusky could, per the language, say, I'm taking a pass for this year, at least on participating on the Room Tax Commission. He could appoint one of the two council members that are on there now, either Mr. Bittner or Mr. Leclerc, to serve in his place, effectively in the presidency. And if the council wished, again, if you wish, I, I'm happy to nominate Mr. Andrews to come in as a citizen member. Sorry, I should have diagrammed that up on the board, but that's, that's basically how it would work, and that, that's the reason. So I, I guess I'd recommend what we have here. You might want to, you might want to look at, do, do you really want to limit the lodging rep going forward in the way that it's limited here? Thank you.
Yes, and just so you know, I am very much in favor of getting Mr. Andrews back on there. We are in deep dialogue and trying to get this thing straightened out with Manitowoc and the Visitors Bureau, and I think it's only right and going to do due diligence for the City of Two Rivers if he continues on serving that versus someone new coming in almost at the end game time. Mark.
Thank you for that, and by the way, I think it is important that we have continuity there, but I do have a question, Greg, about the lodging and, and these memberships.
Yes.
Is this our own dial, I mean, doesn't the current arrangement contract specify some details or so?
Well, yeah, there's two different things here. Again, the, the current contract that runs out at the end of the year for tourism services with Manitowoc and the VCB says that-
Largest, right?
That the Visitor Convention Bureau Board will have the single largest room taxpayer from Two Rivers, that's why the Lighthouse Inn is on, and the first, the first and second largest room taxpayers from Manitowoc, which I think, it's always been the Holiday Inn is the largest. Second might be American, or it might be the-
American Inn.
The one and one, okay. So that pertains there, and that's just, that's dictated by the agreement we have. The statute, though, does say on the city's Room Tax Commission, you have to have a representative of the Wisconsin hotel and motel industry from within the city. So that, that lodging rep, the fifth membership position that's addressed here, is statutory. If you didn't want to limit it to hotels and motels, like I said earlier, then I would just say you'd eliminate the words having at least 10, 10 lodging rooms, and, so it'd just be a hotel, a lodging facility located within the corporate limits. But even though Mr. Van Landon from the Lighthouse Inn serves on this commission now, it's not that it has to be the biggest room taxpaying entity, it could be any lodging facility, if that makes sense. But the law does require that at least one be held by someone from that background.
And then, Mr. President, again, I, I like the elimination of the 10 lodging rooms to give us maybe some flexibility on that group to come. I also would think, which we don't talk about, but the overnight stays are very, very important to our community. We have 28, I believe, now, and they're, they're important too, so I'd like to maybe suggest, if we could, to eliminate the 10 lodging room requirement and just have it open.
I apologize, because I cut in with comments. There is not a motion on the floor yet, so I was just going to suggest if Mr. Bittner wanted to offer that with that amendment.
So I, I would suggest that we just offer-
What's that?
Yes, there is a motion.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
No.
Oh, he cut in right away.
He cut in, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you're right.
Because I figured it was good to give that background before there was a motion.
We should have had a motion before we even start discussion here. All right, so we, we need a motion.
So move.
Darla, seconded by Mark. Now, discussion from council.
And that motion is specifically, you had just read, the 10-room lodging component, right?
The motion would be page 68 in your packet as read by Mr. Buckley, our city manager, correct?
And that would, again, be simply deleting the words at the bottom of the yellow section, having at least 10 lodging rooms, and. Get rid of those words, it'll work, if that, if I understand Mark's intent.
Yeah, that's would be my intention.
And we'd have to, go ahead, Darla.
You mean me?
Oh, Bonnie. Darla would have to amend her motion if that's what she wants to do. But Bonnie, go ahead.
Oh, you do. I, I don't like to see, I, I like to see a larger hotel or something on there. They do generate most of the money, but couldn't these smaller Airbnbs or whatever they are, couldn't they come in on as a citizen? That would be nice if one or two of them would come on, even rotating in and out from year to year.
Yeah, absolutely, council member. They, they could fill one of those citizen slots. Bear in mind, too, and I think council has been on sync with this each year for the four years now that we've had a Room Tax Commission. We kind of played it close to the vest here with council members, city manager, one lodging rep, because our neighboring city, I'll say, plays it pretty close to the vest with their structure. They have the mayor, two council members, the city planner, and a lodging person. So there is that latitude. If you limited it to, as, as this is presented without Mark's amendment, you've still got those two seats each year that could be filled with a citizen who could be a, a single property owner, vacation home property owner.
But I guess I'm confused, and there's five members of the committee, right?
Yep.
And the membership is the president, which Adam, you decline, or you're going to, two city council people.
Or members of the general public.
Or general public.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be the change that we would do.
No, or general public is already in there. It's already in there. Council just has, I haven't nominated and council hasn't seen fit to expand the membership to citizens. Again, kind of keeping it close.
Any other discussion? You wish to amend your motion, Darla?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I, I, so, yeah, I moved to go ahead and, with, with the change.
And that is?
That-
Is that to have the largest motel hotel?
No, 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 I think it should be open to, now I'm confused what we just did. I think it should be open to everyone, or-
Okay.
To all the, not just the largest ones.
So to everyone and anyone, so that includes an A, AR, B and B, or whatever they're called?
Airbnb's?
Yep.
Yeah. I think, I think that that's only fair because, basically, there's a lot of traction with Airbnb's now. It's not just your traditional hotel or, you know, or motel. So I think that they should have some representation.
And so that's for opening it up to everyone. Mark?
About that, yeah.
Do you second that?
I, I do second it, but, yeah, I, I would, I like the concept of opening up, but I guess how we're, how are we going to get there? Then that would be either through the lodging person or through one of the C, city council that currently stands, right? To get a membership from Airbnb?
Yeah, well, somebody mentioned that they could possibly be, they could take one of the spaces that's for citizens. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of flexibility in this. I mean, it would be nice to get representation from your traditional hotel motel, but then also I like the idea of having representation for this new form of lodging that's becoming more popular. I don't know what to tell you. I, I, I think it should be open to everyone. And if there's a, if there's a second, secondary hostilee who wants to be involved, they can come on as a citizen as long as they live in the, within our city limits. That help?
All right.
I just have a question.
Yep.
As it's written, it kind of is open to everyone, isn't it? Because you're saying that citizens can come on. I mean, as it's written right now. Because what I don't know, are you requiring that an Airbnb person come on?
No, that is, that it's open to it.
Oh, okay.
That they are taken into consideration, just like, you know, a, a cobblestone representative would be, or a, a large place like Lighthouse, you know? There, there should be some representation, or give them the opportunity to represent.
Right now, you can have citizens, but we've always elected to do two council members instead of the citizens, so that's going to stay.
As I understand it, right now, the one lodging position, which is the fifth position, is, oh dear, it's, it's filled right now by one of our hotels. The motion would make it that it could be any, a representative of any lodging facility, so, yeah. Which is effectively what the ordinance says now.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
When would the time be that, that would be reconsidered, the mix, then? Do we have a, is it the first of the year where the council?
Correct. Other, other than the possible appointment of Mr. Andrews that we discussed earlier, which is really, yeah, that, which would be at the next meeting. These, these one-year terms run from the first meeting in May, where council does committee appointments, till the next May. Right now, these are specified as one-year terms.
Okay. Jamie, roll call vote.
Jeff Delkey.
Yes.
Tracy Coach.
Yes.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, on to C. State municipal financial agreement providing for 90% Wisconsin Department of Transportation funding for design and construction costs for updating of traffic and pedestrian signals at the Washington 22nd Street intersection. The estimated cost is $224,000, $201,600 federal funding. The balance, local funding to be completed by December 1st, 2023. That is page 70 in your packet. Is there any background information, Greg?
I apologize, somehow these got reversed. I, I, that's why I was looking kind of confused there. The 90% fund, item C, it just, is, is in fact the agreement for 22nd and Washington, but that actually is an $89,000 project. The description in parentheses should be the one that you see under D. Washington and 22nd, and I apologize for that error, is an $89,000 project, proposed 90% federal funding. When you go to D, for the other three, uh, signal lights on Washington, that's where this higher budget number goes, the 201, 600. Apologize for that, those got mixed up.
I thought that looked kind of extreme.
Yeah, it looked awfully expensive up there, didn't it? Yeah. So this would be the agreement, the, the agreement in front of you, per the order on the agenda, is for Washington and 22nd. That total project is estimated 80,100, I'm sorry, 89,000, with 90% federal, 10% local. And I, Mr. President, I would note on both of these, that's based on the, the engineer's best estimate. The federal funding through DOT is capped at the dollar amount shown, so if the projects end up being more expensive, the city share could be higher than 10%. But these are the best available numbers right now, and that's, you have to lock in the federal funding based on current cost estimates.
So these are our best update, best estimated updates to date.
And frankly, kudos to our engineering staff. They've been working quietly on this. Those signals are 15 years old, and as you might notice, we already have problems all too often at Washington and 22nd, where it reverses to a flash mode. So there are parts that aren't available for these signals now, after 15 years.
All right, looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Hey, Jeff, thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Bonnie, thank you. Any discussion?
I'd like to just hear a repeat on what we're voting on, or just, we're discussing specific, because I'm still confused with the numbers I have in front of me.
Okay, the numbers, the numbers, the budget numbers got flipped. Item C is identified as Washington and 22nd. That is the agreement you're voting on now, but the, the relevant numbers are the numbers that appear under D. It's an $89,000 project. The 90-10 split would be 80,100 federal and $8900 local.
It's currently in our budget now, right?
No, this is for a future year. This one has to be completed by 20, by the end of 2023, so it'll be in the capital budget for either 2022 or 23. Yeah, this would be a future budgetary commitment of the council.
Bonnie?
Well, I just had a, a couple of questions, but this, what does it mean standalone program? Is, do you mind explaining that a little bit, Jim?
Standalone program, where are you seeing that, Bonnie?
That's the one we're voting on now, right? Because you said they got mixed up.
Yeah, where's the wording on standalone?
Oh, I, page 74, it's, I, I just guess I was wondering, how is it different from what we have now?
Signals and ITS standalone program. Jim McDonald, are you here?
Yeah.
He's up at the front there.
I, I, I am not sure what that means in this context, but we have two basic grants here. One, and it's dependent upon the bi, biennial budget for the state or federal government. So Washington and 22nd was one standalone application, and it came back with one standalone grant for the 89,000 total project with 8,900 local share. The other one is for the other three lights on Washington Street, 16th, 17th, and 18th, and that combined project is, is just that. And that's the 230, 24, with 22,400 local. The, generally, the, the lights are, as Greg said, 15 years old, very hard, if not impossible, to get replacement parts. When we do replace a controller, it's basically a new one, same one that we would be getting with this program, so they're at the point where it's time.
And Bonnie, to your question, I did a quick Google and my suspicions were confirmed. It's for traffic signals and intelligent transportation systems. I don't know what that is, sounds kind of scary to me. But signals, signals and whatever ITS is about, that are not incidental to other highway improvement projects. So for example, when Washington got rebuilt 15 years ago, the signals were part and parcel of a bigger project. This is standalone because it's funding solely signals.
And intelligent communications might be the audio to allow the people who are blind perhaps to hear that it's safe to cross?
Could be.
Yeah, the, the lights will have a countdown system so that when you look across the street, you can time your walk a little bit.
Okay.
Do you mind if I, I, I also had, I was just wondering, an upgrade to count down pedestrian heads, is, I mean, are you really going to count them? Who's crossing this, crossing the street?
Uh, yeah, right now, they are simply timed, and what these do is, you'll, you'll see a, a light across the street, and it'll say, 20 seconds, 19, 18, 17, so it gives you, it tells you when to hurry up, I guess.
And actually, we have that now at at least 22nd and Washington. And actually, we have that now at least 22nd and Washington.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell you how much is there, I don't believe.
I think it starts at like 10. I think it goes red and then starts 10, something like that.
It could.
And it talks to you.
Yeah, it does talk to you.
On a good day.
It yells at you.
When it's not raining.
All right, any other discussion? All right, this is an all in favor, so if you're in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, on to D. State municipal financial agreement providing for 90% Wisconsin Department of Transportation funding for design and construction costs for updating of traffic and pedestrian signals at Washington Street at the intersections of 16th, 17th, and 18th Streets. Estimated cost of 201,000, or $224,000, which is the project cost, $201,600 federal funding balance to be completed by December 1st, 2025. Looking for any background information on that?
Thank you first for straightening out my screwed up agenda there. You got it right. Again, this is the balance of the other three signals on Washington Street. Again, it's not replacing every single thing out there. A lot of the housings and supports will stay, but they'll have all new electronic components. And just as an aside, it's not decided exactly how they'll be programmed, you know, four or five years out, but there would be the ability to make greater use of vehicle detection on the side streets so you could keep a green light for the main line traffic, if you will, on Washington. So that, or it can go to a straight timer cycle like it does now, but that could be very advantageous as long as it doesn't result in too much speeding down Washington Street. But as engineering has pointed out, we have the ability to program them, at least there would be that ability to keep the main line traffic flowing when there's not traffic on side streets. And most times of the day, you still have fairly frequent traffic on those intersecting streets that would trip the signal. So again, 90% funding overdue, recommend council authorization, local match will be provided for in a future budget.
All right, looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
I'll move.
Thank you, Tracy. And a second?
I'll second.
Bonnie, thank you. We got Bonnie, sorry, Bill, we'll get you on the next one. Any discussion? See, none. Again, we're going to do an all in favor. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to E. Advisory Recreation Board, recommendations regarding naming of parks. Any background on that?
I'll let you know that is one of our.
All right, motion to rename Harbor Park to Coast Guard Park and rename the Harbor Dock Area or Lot F to Harbor View Park. Looking for a motion. Darla, thank you. Bill will second that one. Perfect. Any discussion? Mark?
Adam, or Mr. President, let me ask, within the existing Harbor Park, you're going to rename that to Coast Guard Park, but there is a docking area in that area. You're talking about then the park, the secret park across the street is the second name then?
Yep, that will be, parking lot F will become Harbor View Park.
And all the way up, across from McDonald's area.
Yes, that whole parking lot will become that, and then the current Harbor Park will be Coast Guard Park.
And the parking lot will become Harbor.
And that includes the big parking lot that a lot of folks use when they go fish off the harbor seawall and the green areas upriver on the West Wind.
And this came back from an ARB meeting where the members voted on this based on public input. So, there was input, Terry tallied it all up, gave us the top three, and that was the recommended name. And was also, Greg Buckley was all in for it.
Not that I have an opinion on this, but thank you Advisory Recreation Board and the anonymous party that came up with that name. And it wasn't me, but it might be somebody that gets a vote on this, but I don't want to skew things.
It was a good one, definitely was. All right, so we will do an all in favor. So, if you're in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, on to F. Discussion of possible action to declare the city of Two Rivers a constitutional sanctuary with possible direction to city staff to prepare a resolution for a future city action requested by council president based on a request from a city council member. Do you want to do any background on that? Perfect.
This is a council discussion.
All right, so then we will look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Well, we're going to open it up for discuss, I guess we don't really have anything to do, so we're going to do council discussion on this instead of a vote. So, is there discussion on this?
Actually.
I think we all got a memo in our packet as well.
A memo?
In your packet, there should have been.
I got the resolution, but not a memo.
Memo, but yeah, there was a resolution that had been on, I don't know if Manitowoc County had considered this, but it was written up for the Manitowoc County Government.
Okay.
It was just a guideline.
Well, I know, but if you don't mind, are we discussing here?
We're only discussing this.
Okay. Because it was a little confusing to me because, simply because of the words saying Manitowoc County legislators, I would, if this is from Two Rivers, I would prefer for it to say Two Rivers, but I also thought, from my understanding, Manitowoc County considered a gun sanctuary. That's what I thought this was about. I would like to at least have some discussion so I understand better what's happening.
Yep, that's what we're doing pretty much. I screwed that up. It is discussion tonight, and if we wish city staff, we can direct them to prepare a resolution for our next meeting. Darla?
First of all, I appreciate everybody's passion about the city that has come out, and I especially like the input from people who are citizens of Two Rivers. However, I don't feel that a handful of people who do this, what our community might want us to make a decision on is a very divisive issue, and I think we have to be very, very careful.
Darla, is your mic on?
Yeah?
No. Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, sorry about that.
Start over then, maybe, Darla.
Well, I was just saying that it's a divisive issue, extremely divisive, and we have to tread carefully and ensure that we are actually representing our constituents. And I think to that end, you know, because I think that, you know, it's a very strange time in our history, everything that we've gone through and everything that we're going to continue going through. But tonight, I definitely heard passion, and I can understand where that's coming from, but I also heard fear, I heard panic, I heard a lot of anger. I don't think that that's really representative of our city. To that end, I make a motion that we tabled this issue until there is a petition that is signed by, I think in all fairness, at least 20% of the voting public, saying that yes, this is something that we really want. And so, right now, just so you know, we have 6,253 registered voters. 50% would be the most indicative of how people in this city actually think on this topic. However, I think that 20% would be a fair representation. So, I do make that motion to table until it can be shown that this is what our city wants.
I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion? Jeff?
This is exactly what we were elected to do, take care of, uphold the Constitution. It is our job to do this. I think it's very important. In the last 18 months, we've been infringing on the First Amendment, Second Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, the Fifth Amendment, and the 14th Amendment. We tried to stop them from whittling away at our rights. This is a perfect example of what we should be doing.
Don't you want to hear from the residents to make sure that we're representing them to the best of our ability?
This is exactly what we were elected to do. We're fulfilling our duties by upholding the Constitution.
Just would notice.
Exactly what we were elected to do.
As our city attorney just noted, a motion to table is supposed to be non-debatable.
That is under Roberts rules.
Okay, we were in discussion mode at the time.
But there was a motion issued.
Okay, so then we will motion to table this, and we'll do a roll call vote on that.
Oh, okay.
We can't discuss, we can't discuss.
Well, can I just ask a question? Can this be brought up at a work session?
My, you know, my take on it, and Jack, please tell me if I'm wrong, is a motion to table is non-debatable. If the council wished to continue discussion, you could vote against, if a majority votes against the motion to table, discussion could continue. If it's specifically tabled by the council to, the conditions that were proposed are met, you know, a petition representing at least 20% of the registered voters, then I, I'm not sure. I think I'm precluded from bringing it for action, or the council, it'd be inconsistent with the direction.
Was there a motion to do that?
I made a motion to table.
I second the motion.
Yeah.
Motion to table typically suspends further consideration of something by the body, so I don't know if a motion was required before a motion to table is made. But Roberts rules indicates that a motion to table is not debatable, it can, must be seconded, and it's a question of majority vote. Did there need to be a motion prior to the certain motion? Motion prior to what? I'm not sure.
Prior to a motion to table.
That there must be a motion prior to the motion?
Because there was no motion. We were in discussion mode at the time, and then a motion came from that discussion, but not everyone got to discuss. It kind of just got shut down. So, I think what the question is, should there have been a motion to table before we got into discussion, but we were already in discussion because there was no motion on the agenda?
I just have.
We're waiting for the city attorney to look this up.
It's Roberts rules, yeah. I think that's correct. Looking at this, a motion to table or a lay on the table refers to temporarily setting aside a pending motion or a series of pending motions. So, in the absence of a motion at this time, I don't know if a motion to table is appropriate.
Okay. So, we continue on with discussion, correct? Okay. Bonnie, did you have a question then, or was it just?
Well, no, I was wondering if this could be discussed at a work session? Because I.
It's our discretion, so yes, if that's what you.
As I understood, the request that came from council is relayed through the council president, because we haven't prepared a staff resolution. This isn't coming to you from staff, let me make that clear. It's coming at the request of council, which is certainly fair. Absent direction from the council to prepare a resolution, we have no reason to be preparing one. So, it could be on any future agenda, as long as it's not tabled in a way that precludes putting it on that agenda.
Mark?
Please clarify that, because when I looked at this agenda, I had no idea, and I didn't know, and I'm not, and I'm opposed to it because of the status. So, did this come from council or how did this get on the agenda?
It came through council president to come on the agenda, as stated.
Specifically at Mr. Wajuski's request as council president.
But is that, a president can order anything he wants on the conference?
I brought it up. The council president, under the law and under our ordinances, has the authority to call a special meeting. So does the city manager, so do two council members. Now, rather than requiring a special meeting each time that occurs, historically, the council has construed that as providing that whenever a council president wants a matter on the agenda, or the city manager wants a member on the agenda, or two council members want it on the agenda, it's put on the agenda. So, yeah, I think the council president has that authority.
What, you know, I think, and Jeff just told us, he asked the president to bring it up. Jeff, and I agree with everyone who's passionate about this, but this has some pretty, I think, serious ramifications for the status of our community from outside, and the majority of citizens in the community need to be involved too. You've led a passionate plea on your Facebook activities with this and asking people to come here tonight, but I don't think that awareness has been broadly promoted to the general community and the people that I saw since on Sunday, because I didn't read this until, I've talked to or think it's overdone and not necessary. And then they could, because the issue tonight was passion, I'm sensitive too, of masks and vaccines and people dying, because I have friends that's died from this. But I also think that the status of a constitutional sanctuary is potentially more damaging to the community than just addressing the two issues that you're so passionate about. So, that, again, in fairness, is my opinion, okay? I may not be correct, that's my opinion, okay? So, I think we ought to get more input from the general people, and I like Darla's idea of opening this up for comment publicly.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we got a, oh, go ahead, Bill, I'm sorry.
I would just like to make a comment about Mr. Dahlke's statement that we were elected to do this with, to uphold the Constitution. That's part of our swearing in, of course, but our number one, the number one reason we're elected on this city council is to do the city business, take care of the constituents of the city, to make sure the streets are paved, to make sure the police department's operating, to make sure the fire department's operating, to pay the bills. That's what, that's what, that's what our city council is mostly about. And today, and we're not really about taking political stance. It's great to, I like to pass them with people and everything, but our city council's not the place. We're pretty neutral, we try to stay neutral. Nobody sits there and says, I'm a Republican, I'm a Democrat, and I want this because of that. We don't do that. That's not what we're about. We're about taking care of the city business before anything. And of course, the Constitution is the highly, most highly respected set of rules that we have to use to govern our city. We're not going to go outside of the Constitution. And to really, everybody is already backed by the Constitution. I don't think we need to be redundant and say we're also a constitutional sanctuary. Everybody in the United States is backed by the Constitution. The whole United States is a constitutional sanctuary.
Mark?
And I believe, to let you tell, I had to read this too, really more about the 10th Amendment, which clarifies state and federal. And what we're doing here is we're basically, if we create ourselves as a constitutional sanctuary, we're declining to be controlled by any state laws, and we're developing our own rules to operate our city. And I like being a citizen of Wisconsin, okay? So, it's a passion issue, I'm sensitive to different roles and ideas, but I think the ramifications of this is beyond those two passionate points that people have brought up, that, and I don't think it's positive.
I'm going to be cautious treading into something that, face it, is a very politically charged issue. I do have some questions about what expectations, I haven't seen a resolution specific to Two Rivers, but what expectations it might create among the public as to what the council wishes to do or can do. My understanding of our constitutional democracy is we have an executive branch, a legislative branch, and a judicial branch, and it takes time, sometimes unfortunately, as an earlier speaker pointed out, for something to make its way through the courts. Governor Evers' mask mandate seemed to take a long time for the state Supreme Court to act. But absent a determination by a court of appropriate jurisdiction, ultimately the US Supreme Court is, who's going to be the arbiters then? Are we, does? Are we, does this imply that the local city council are the arbiters of what's constitutional and what isn't? And that this council is going to pick and choose directing what federal and state laws, which might be under appeal, appeals might be pending in the courts, will be enforced locally? I'm, I'm not sure if that's the pledge you can deliver on that promise. And I, and I guess I'm not sure where that puts us in the context. I mean, there's probably folks, or you go around town, you'll find folks that think, that certainly take issue with President Biden's, uh, vaccine mandate, uh, and the things that go with it. And I expect there'll be challenges to that. There are people around this town that probably think the Texas abortion law doesn't, doesn't affect anyone that lives in Wisconsin, but is unconstitutional. I bet you there's not much of an intersect between those two groups, but they both feel fervently about the issue. And ultimately, sometimes it's imperfect and it's slow, but ultimately the courts make those decisions. I'm, I'm just not sure what the implications are as to what a city council can do and what expectations adoption of such a resolution might create in the public as to what this council and the city government can do. I just, I just offer that up. I respect the opinions that are out there, but ultimately we have a system. And if you believe in our constitution, we have mechanisms and institutions to take care of those issues. That's the extent of my comment.
Bonnie. You're not on.
Down, Bonnie, down to the lower right, one of the.
I don't think it's on. I don't think it's on. I don't think your microphone's on.
It's on, you're ready.
Oh, it is now. Um, our Manitowoc County sheriff will uphold the constitution. I'm, I actually have heard him say that. I mean, if that's of any comfort, because he does have, sheriffs have quite a bit of power. No offense, chief.
Mark.
And again, I'm sensitive to the passion of the two issues. We started this fuel fight, or flyer fight, but I, I, I'm concerned, right, and Greg's point is that creating our constitutional sanctuary, there could be other issues that are out there that people want, and we're going to be judging, evaluating all these. It could be, it could be about liquor. It could be about gambling. It could be about all kinds of things that are emotionally charged in some different people, but is it the majority? I'm here, I think, elected official to represent the majority, and I, I don't feel a majority groundswell of support for this issue. I see that there are some very passionate people specifically on that, but I, I, I'm opposed to making a general statement for what the ramification was. I think it will mean for the city and the time involved.
Darla.
I was going to say too, and, 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 uh, it was brought up several times this evening, that when we're sworn in, we do take an oath, and that is to support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Wisconsin. I don't know of anybody who's sitting up here who didn't mean what they said. I don't think anyone sitting up here just parroted words. I think we all take this extremely seriously, and we reaffirm our commitment to this country and to this city every time we say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think that Bill made a very, very good point when he said, here's what city council does. We make sure that we have protective services. We make sure that we're, that we're making road improvements and that we're concentrating on economic development. And that's what we are capable of doing. None of us has a degree in constitutional law. You know, we do the best that we can with what we've got, and we know what our, what we are tasked with. And that is making sure that this city, city runs as smoothly as possible and that everybody who lives here has, uh, uh, just the best quality of life that they possibly can. For something of this magnitude, we need to know where the people stand on this. And that's all I've got.
Okay, any more discussion from council?
Jeff.
I know, I understand we're supposed to be taking care of all the general business throughout the city, but when we take our oath, it is in there saying that we are to uphold the constitution. This is nothing more than reiterating and giving confidence in the people and the public that we will do exactly that. We will uphold the constitution. That's all that this is. That's all we need to do. There's nothing political about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we got to give some direction to, uh, to city staff on going forward with this. So, um, I hear twenty percent for a petition of registered voter, voters. We can move forward with it, or we can totally scrap it. So I guess we're just going to go around and we're going to see what everybody wants to do so we can give some kind of direction to city staff on how to move forward on this, or not to move forward on that for that matter. So I will skip over myself, but I'm going to start with Mark and we'll go around.
I, I'd say we scrap it, let the state take the lead.
Tracy.
I like the idea of, if, if you want something locally, then we have to have local participation more than, I would rather see a petition by the folks in the city of Two Rivers who really want us to head in that direction, to provide something so that, that way we can actually provide concrete guidance to the city staff.
Okay. Jay.
I second that. I agree with Tracy.
Jeff.
I'm okay with the petition, but not at that amount of people. That, that, that just takes enormous amounts of time.
Okay.
What, we could go with the guidelines. What was the guidelines when, if they were going to go and say, switch from city manager government to, to mayor? What guidelines were they with that? I think that's probably a more fair number.
I don't know what that is.
Yeah, based on the gubernatorial election, our last gubernatorial election.
You know what percentage it is? I think that's what Jeff's asking.
I think seven percent rings a bell, but I could try to look it up here for you quickly.
I think that would just be more fair to do it that way, because we have it through chains.
Okay. The, the one that we have on here, unless Darla wants to take it back, because I'm going to go with her, because it's her decision and among discussion, that's kind of what we came up with, was twenty percent. So we're going to stick with that unless Darla wants to change that, so I'll let that up to Darla.
No, I was just going to say that if we were doing a survey of people where there was multiple choices, the, the, uh, the fair, the fair number would be far different. This is a, a petition, and if we've got, you know, six thousand two hundred and fifty registered voters, because whoever signs this petition, they're going to have to be vetted to make sure that they actually are citizens of our city. I think twenty percent is extremely fair. I'm not asking for fifty. Ten, I think, is too light, and I think that if you go, I had to pull out my books from university to, with, when I took statistics. And twenty percent is a very nice even number. And yes, it might be time-consuming, and it might take longer than if you did five percent or ten percent, which I don't think are, um, indicative of, of our population. If you're that passionate about this issue, then you'll take the time. So I, I would like to stick with twenty percent. I think it's extremely fair. It's not overreaching and asking for fifty.
Okay. Jeff, so which one do you want to go with? Do you want to move forward, scrap it, or twenty percent?
I have a little more information.
Sure, go ahead.
On the percentage, if, if you're interested. In the case of direct legislation, where the, uh, the population can, um, file a petition with the city clerk, uh, requesting that an attached proposed ordinance or resolution be adopted, uh, what's required there is that there be fifteen percent of the votes cast for governor at the last general election in the city. It, it, when they, when that fifteen percent of the population signs and files a petition, uh, then, um, the ordinance or resolution proposed may either be adopted by the common council or the city council or referred to the vote of the electors, so.
Okay. Thank you for looking that up. Jeff? When do you want to be?
I don't really have much, I just have to go. No.
Okay, Darla?
Petition.
Bonnie? You want to do the twenty percent petition, move forward or scrap it?
No, not scrap it. Um, I would like to hear from more residents, because I, I just want to also say, I think our job as a council person is to represent people, not just, you know, go ahead and say, here's the rules. And if you want, if this is supposed to reiterate that we support the constitution, then let's say that. I also would like, if, if staff didn't touch it till we come and say, here's what we'd like to have in this.
That's okay by me.
Yeah.
By your staff. I guess, bear in mind.
I got one more. I got to ask Bill. Bill?
Oh, yeah. Go along with the petition.
Petition, thank you. Greg, sorry.
Thank you. No. Um, I just wanted to point out, just for clarity, if, if there, if there's a motion out there, or if there's going to be, please make it clear if you're talking about there's a certain number of signatures you want to see as a threshold to it coming back to the council to then give direction to staff, which is what I'm understanding. Although you might opt to use the same standard, as far as how many signatures of voters do you want to see that Jeff alluded to? That is in the law that relates to initiative and referendum or direct legislation. So that may be the standard you're using, but I'm not hearing that the desire was that it's a motion saying, we'll put it on the ballot if we get that. Anybody can go out and circulate a petition for direct legislation without this body's blessing. But that, there, there's a twenty, twenty percent of registered voters has been suggested. The alternative of fifteen percent of those that voted at the last gubernatorial election is a standard pulled from another area of the law, which the council could apply, but just, let's not create confusion that you're, if, if you're not intending that this, the, the petition isn't about direct legislation, it's whether the council gives further consideration to this topic.
I think that's what we're getting at, is once we receive twenty percent, then we'll take it up on a vote. But as Bonnie said, she would like to help construct it, or she'd like council to see it before staff dives into it. Is that correct, Bonnie? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm okay with this, the idea of getting more ideas. How do we verify the legitimacy of the signatures of the twenty percent we do receive? That they actually sign it or aren't, they, that's what, that's what they actually agree to, not encouraged by.
Right. It's the same, it's along the same lines as when we want to run for city council and we have to get signatures for our signature sheets to even get us on the ballot. All of those, um, all of those signatures are, are vetted. They're verified to make sure that, that people who are, are being counted are actual citizens of our city. It would have to be the same thing, you know, Jamie is amenable.
That should be part and parcel of your motion though, because there's no body of law that mandates that. I mean, that's, you can clearly do it, and Kirk can do a great job of it. That's not something that's directly provided for, so that should be in any motion.
And we don't have a motion yet, so we should probably make a motion before we discuss that motion.
The motion was to table, so.
Right, but, but, but we didn't motion it and, and vote on it.
Oh, okay, alright.
So we, we need that motion, and then we need to vote on it. We'll have discussion, then vote on it.
Do you want me to amend my motion?
You need to make a motion. We don't have a motion at all.
Okay.
Before you do, Jay.
Because this, this was just for council discussion, so now we're trying to tell staff what we want from our discussion. So we got, we got to motion something to tell them what to do.
I thought we were just going to table it until, until we knew that that's what the citizens wanted and then go forward with it.
Probably the.
I don't think a motion to table is appropriate.
Okay, okay.
There's a pending motion.
Alright, well, I take that back then. Alright.
If you want to make that motion, and then we can discuss it and vote on it and.
Okay.
Hopefully move on.
Alright.
Jay wants to say something.
Yeah.
Um, I kind of feel passionate about this myself. Um, I have my own things that I feel passionate about, and I ain't going to sit here and tell you guys all this, but, um, I do believe we should be following the standard. If fifteen percent is the standard, then that's what we should be following. Just like when we get our signatures for running for council, we do the standard. Yes, we do a little bit more over, just in case you do get that one person that sneaks in and signs it that's not in township or in the city. Um, but yeah, I think if, if the, if the city wants this, I mean, it would be really easy to get the signatures. I know when I ran for council, I ran and, um, I talked to a couple of people and I got my name out there, and I had all my signatures done within a couple of days. Um, I don't think it's hard. I don't know what fifteen percent is of the voting. I don't know what the total number would be, but, um, there's places you can get them really quick. I think we should go to fifteen percent. I think that should be the standard. I mean, we shouldn't be asking them for twenty percent. That's kind of, you're kind of inhibiting the right way of doing things by doing that, I guess. That's my feeling.
You want me to restate it then? Okay. Okay, I make a motion that staff waits, waits to spend any time on this with, uh, writing up a, um, a resolution until they hear back from us, which is predicated on, um, seeing a, or receiving a petition that includes fifteen percent of our, um, registered voters, which there are six thousand two hundred and fifty-three, um, which will then kind of open up this issue to discussion and to go ahead and create a resolution just for the city of Two Rivers. And we would, we would then follow through on that.
Okay.
Was that alright?
That sounds good to me. And do we have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mark.
But with the amendment added in the second, that we identify what that means to the city, not only the two issues we're passionate about, what other issues could be coming forward on that? That, that's my biggest concern, is it, it opens the floodgates for anybody.
I don't think that has much to do with what this is, though. The people can come with those things at any point in time.
Yeah, but if we're constitutional city, those all are open season.
That's what council is going to work on, according to, to the motion, before staff reviews it.
By accepting that motion, we, Jack, I believe legally, then we can open the gates for any issue that can be perceived by need for the citizens. Is that correct or not? Or is it only constitutional for masks and vaccines, which is the passion here tonight?
I don't know. That would ultimately be up to, to the council as to what you want to put into, uh, a resolution of this guy.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
If, if you're asking, though, the public to not only indicate a petition or not only sign a petition, that a constitutional sanctuary resolution be considered or developed, uh, i- if you wanted to explain also what kind of a constitutional sanctuary resolution that they're looking for. I, I think it's, it's going to be very difficult to get a petition of that kind. I guess, but I'm saying not everyone will agree on, uh, on, on what, um, on the details of what the resolution would address.
I mean, I think to Mark's point, we are, we're always open to the public to come in here and voice their thoughts and, and share their concerns, and it's up to us as a body of government to take them on and see what, what we want to do with them. So i- in this case, we're, we're opening it up to a petition, and in the next case, we, we may not. We may scrap it, we may move forward with it. I mean, we'll take them on a case-by-case basis, I would assume. But that, that's what we're going with this one, unless Darla has some kind of, uh, amendment that she wants to pose on there.
I was going to ask, um, should I, should we also include, or should I also include in my motion the fact that the, the people who sign the petition must be citizens of the city of Two Rivers and that they're on the, the, the voter roll, and it can be, um, city of Two Rivers, and that they're on the voter roll, and it can be verified? So, should that be part of the motion, then?
That's typically what you would require in a direct legislation petition. They have to be, 15% of the votes cast for governor at the last general election in the city. So, you're looking at voters in the city. The same thing on a charter ordinance.
Okay.
They have to be citizens of the city, in order to qualify to execute the petition.
All right, seeing this is a sensitive issue, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Let's repeat them.
Do you want Jamie to repeat the motion? Okay, Jamie, go ahead, repeat the motion, as you have it, please.
So, Darla's motion was to have staff wait to spend any time on writing a resolution until staff hears back from council, which would be predicated on seeing a petition on 15% of the 6,253 registered voters that want to see this move forward. And then further added that they must be citizens of the city of Two Rivers and registered voters, so that they can be validated.
Sounds good to everyone? Perfect.
Darla.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dahlke.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, on to G. Consideration of Options For Filling Council Vacancy. This will be at council's discretion, but we're going to let Jack give us his options that he has stated for us. You can also find his memo or his options on page 92 of your packet.
The options are, essentially, the council can, by its own act, and in accordance with the procedure it elects to follow, because there's no standard set in the law, fill the vacancy for the balance of the term. That's one option. The second option is to fill the vacancy, but only until such time as a special election is held. The third option is to not fill the vacancy until such time as a special election has been held, and the special election therefore would determine who will be filling the vacancy, and in the interim, no one will be filling the vacancy. Those are essentially the three options.
When you talk special election, can we use the spring election as that?
Yeah, that gets really interesting if you look at the statutory language, which I think is pretty bewildering. But I think that you could use the spring election for purposes of the special election.
I mean, council can do whatever it wants, but remember, it costs a lot of money to run an election.
Yeah, but the special election, I think, would, would, would be effective only for the balance of the, of the term of the council member that vacated the seat. So, it wouldn't be like a regular election would be, and give them rights to, to fill that, or to sit in that seat for, for the full term of a council member, just the balance.
And Greg? I was just going to parrot a bit of what Jack said. It's a special, it's on the regular election date, but it's a special election as it relates to that seat.
Okay.
And we've been over this ground before, in previous instances, even before the law changed. Understand, because council members here are elected by large versus by district, so there would be three seats available for the regular three-year terms. There'd be one available for a two-year term. You can't do something that might seem common sense, like, hey, the fourth highest vote getter gets the two-year term. People, anyone interested in running for that vacancy for a two-year term has to file specifically to run for that.
Well, yeah, and, and the notices will be different, too. It wouldn't be, the notice required for the general election, it'd be a separate kind of notice, indicating that it is a special election.
Can they put themselves on there twice? Once for the special, and once for the regular?
So, I was thinking.
Which would kind of make things interesting in the end.
That is, that is a good question. I don't know of anything that would prohibit that.
So, what happens?
Pathetically.
Yeah. Oh, so what happens if they get voted in twice?
They really like them.
Ah, boy.
Say something.
I don't know if they could pick and choose under those circumstances. I think if, if they, if they elected to run, and again, this is frankly speculation, maybe there's a law that explains what actually happens. But if they elected to run for the full three-year term, I would think they'd be obligated then to.
What if they won the full three-year term and the two-year term?
They would be, they would be then running for one of the regularly open council seats in addition to the vacancy.
Could I say something?
Sure.
He's not responding.
Means I don't have to say so.
I remember that one time we had an opening for one year, and I don't think we got anybody to run for that, but I think for a two-year term, it might be different. You know, you have to collect 100 signatures to just get on one year, and it's kind of... But I'm just saying that for the next election, I would be in favor of that, of putting a special election for the next spring. Yeah.
Let me look at that in more detail and give you a better answer than just what would happen in those circumstances.
Okay, so.
I think the vacancy, you know, will have to be filled one way or another in those circumstances, so. I mean, more, more than one person is, is going for the special election. Now, let me, let me get back to you on that.
Mark, clarify to what we earlier talked about, if we only have three people, and one of the three are running for the open two-year term, which I believe was the number, and the, and running for the three-year, what happens if that person wins both seats? So, we're still short one councilperson, aren't we? We only have eight, and we're supposed to have nine.
Or even if they were.
Would not get two votes. I think that's what the city council said, the state elections commission about.
With four people on there, and three, and then one of those same three that are on for the three-year term wins that other term, well, the fourth, then get enough for either one.
Right, and we'd be right back in the same boat?
We'd be in the same boat. So, I guess before us today, though, is, not getting too far ahead of ourselves, do we want to appoint someone until the spring election, or a special election, sorry? Do we want to wait to the special election, or do we just want to appoint someone in general, I think are our options? So, that's kind of what we got to determine here tonight, how we want to go about this. Go ahead, Bill. Sorry. Go ahead.
Isn't there a February, isn't there elections in February?
That's the primary.
I think that's a primary, so that means we have to have, I believe, five council members, so I don't think anything else would be on this primary.
I'm just saying, couldn't we elect the one opening in February?
Not if we don't have a primary, so we'd have to have, I think, five people run for city council.
Oh.
In order to have a primary. If we don't get that many, then we're not, we don't have a primary, we don't run it.
Or a statewide.
You're just talking about for one position, for a special one.
Right, then we'd be having an election just for that one, so it would cost the city money to run that one election, because we wouldn't be running it for any other reason.
Is it really that expensive, or?
I don't think it's cheap, but I don't have the direct numbers.
Well, the other thing, if you, if you have a special election for that two-year term, I'd say the odds are against having five or more people saying, I want to get that two-year term, but you have to allow for that potential, potential of needing a primary for that two-year term. So, if the council wants to see someone elected as soon as practical, yeah, you could, out of, out of the city budget, fund a true special election where nothing else is on the ballot, but next April's election preceded by next year's February primary would be your easiest, most cost-effective opportunity.
Okay, Darla?
I'd like to see, all right, because we have until April, let's say April. That's quite a long time to be down one person, and my, my fear is, is that we're going to have eight people on city council, and it comes to, to vote on an issue, and we're, we're deadlocked, we're tied. What's going to break that tie? That's, that's the beauty of having an odd number. So, I'm thinking that because it, April is still quite a ways away, if we could go ahead and fill the slot, like we did this last time with Kay, it's for, it's for, it's just an interim.
Until the election, yep.
And then, yeah, and then attack it at that time. But I would like to see a ninth person.
I would, too, if you want my opinion. Anybody else? Tracy?
Well, rather than appoint somebody, couldn't we just allow them to, in, in the past, haven't people supplied letters, like application as to why they want to fill that until April? And...
We did previous council members.
It'd probably be up to us how we want to appoint them, which that would fall into, we can discuss how we want to appoint them, whether it's through letters, or just through a nomination process.
There's kind of two levels of decision here. What are the council's thoughts on filling by appointment, or not filling by appointment, and when you elect for the vacancy? And there are pretty clear, except for one question that came up tonight, statutory requirements on that. If you decide tonight, say, that, well, gee, we'd like to appoint someone, whether it's for till April election, or for the balance of the term, those are your two options for an appointment, then there are no statutory rules, other than they be an eligible elector, or someone of voting age in the city, and not a convicted felon. And, you know, that is really up to the council, and, yeah, there's been precedent of turn in an application, a letter of interest, and council does interviews. The last two vacancies, when Patrick Gagnon passed away, and then when Jack Pawalish had to resign due to a work schedule conflict, the council, in its discretion, has said, gee, is there somebody who's served on council who would be interested in returning for a short period of time? So, it's, if you make a decision, want to do an appointment, that really is entirely within your purview, how you go about doing it.
Mark? I was originally on council for, from April, or no, October, through the April period, because we lost a councilperson, and at that time, city council had nine people trying to get on that term, and each of us talked to city council, and I was elected by city council. That's how that appointment was made. I'd rather than, I'd like to engage in some way to let something new happen, rather than this reappointing people who have been on city council, because I think that's a great way for us to continue to be responsive to the public. And if we do that, then, then we have to decide in April, who have four openings, right? Because three people are naturally going to be eligible for election, because their terms are over. Sure, I know that, three people will be, terms will be over. So, then we'll have to make sure that there are four, if we point for just their term till the next election, there'll be four people that we get from the community, because otherwise, we run the chance of one person running for both the balance of two, and then the three.
I'm thinking, I'd interrupt, but.
Sure, but how are we going to fix that, Jack?
I'm thinking that a person should not be able to run for two different public offices where the two terms run concurrently, because that would really make no sense. My, I think that a person is going to have to decide what they're doing, either running for the special election, or running for the general election. I don't think they can run for both.
Would it be legitimate to vote as a council, to have this person replaced till the next election, and then allow him to run in the election for the continued two years that Kurt's position is open for?
I don't think we can stop that.
Yeah, that's my question, I guess, is.
Okay, I don't know why we'd want to stop that, either. Jay?
I, I'm just going to ask the question, if, if we would do like what Mark said, interview people, have someone come on, can they sit the rest of Kurt's position, and not even have a special election?
You can decide to do that, yeah, that's one of your options.
Well, no, it would just repeat his normal time.
The special election is running concurrent with our spring election.
I'm just saying, if we would appoint a person to fill in to Kurt's end date, this way we wouldn't have to have an election, because he's already filled.
We have to have the election for the council members, anyway, coming up in spring.
It wouldn't be that additional cost.
I'm just saying, if we get rid of that fourth position, we'd only have, we'd be back to a normal council, till, you know, everything will be going normal again, is what I'm looking at. We'd appoint somebody and say, here, you're going to fill Kurt's.
Just not worry about that part, okay.
And then the next three.
Well, that would sit with the public.
That's what we're here to decide.
Basically appointing somebody for plus years.
I kind of like having it just to get us through until April, and then that way, we've got that ninth, and, but then we, we do it the right way, you know, and that's still quite a bit of time for that person to, to run. That's two more years, so it's not, it's not a waste of their time.
Bonnie?
I like the election, too, because then it's, I feel like the people of Two Rivers elected that person, as opposed to us. Because I know one thing, you know, Mark, when you got in, part of the reason you got in, there was a lot of people that year that interviewed, but Mark was the only one who ran before that, so he was the only one who collected his, did you collect 200 that year, or 100?
I, I can't remember, but I previously won, and I lost the election by one vote.
But anyway, that, I know that I voted for him because of that. I thought, well, if he went through all that work, I'll vote for him. Because a lot of them, there wasn't anybody that I didn't think was good to get on, and it's a hard thing, so that's how I boiled it down. I know somebody else did that same thing, but any, I'm just, I don't even know why I said that, but.
Okay, so how do we want to move forward on this? Do we want to appoint someone, and then have the special election?
Yes.
Yes?
I agree.
What are we thinking? Let's go around the room.
Point somebody, appoint, but.
We'll point, and then.
But, but somebody, by virtue of they apply, or send a letter, or whatever, and we interview him, and then appoint him, as opposed to picking somebody who's already served?
We can do that probably at the work session, is, because we don't have any information we can put out now, can we? As far as how we're going to do this, we're just...
Unless you agree on how to go about that at this time. I think you could, under the open meetings law, I think the agenda item is probably broad enough to encompass that. But there's no need that you do, so you could do it at the work session.
Time to think about how you want to make the appointment, and the special election.
I was just going to say, if there's, if there's a consensus you want to fill it next, fill the balance of this term next April with a so-called special election, but on the regular council election date, and, and the motion also indicates that generally the council wants to solicit applications from interested members of the community, we as the staff could bring back a template for something at your work session next Monday, saying, well, here's, here's how we could post it, here's a suggested timeline, maybe the applications are due a couple weeks out, and then the council, if you get 50 applications, you might want to narrow down how many you want to interview, or if you get five, you probably would want to interview everyone. If, if you provide that direction, we, without getting out ahead of ourselves, or beyond our role as a staff, we could bring something back at the work session, saying, well, is this what you want? If, if you want to fill it in April, and you want us, by election, but you want to solicit applications from the community for your appointment, we can bring you something with some fill-in-the-blanks for dates, and that sort of thing.
Does anyone have heartburn with what Greg just said? Because I sure don't. No? Perfect, that's what we're going to go with, so.
A motion to that effect?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
We can do it that way, too.
And that's a motion to declare the council's intent to fill... And that's a motion to declare the council's intent to fill the vacancy by appointment only until the April 2022 election. And to put, to appoint someone to the position up to that point or pending that election, with staff to come back with the suggested form of communication for that at the work session next Monday.
Can we direct the staff to do it like now? I mean, right away? I mean, do we have to wait for the work session?
I think he's going to bring that template back at work session for a review.
The intention would be to have it in your Friday packet.
Right, but I mean, I, we trust you that you can design something like that. If you can get it out to the public so we get people applying right away, you know.
Well, one of the...
Because I mean, we don't really need to approve what it looks like or what, you know. I mean, if they know what they're, if they have a template that they use and it works, so let's just let them use that template and let's get people applying. This way at the work session, we can almost start interviewing people already.
Are you making a motion?
Well, okay, can we...
I'm just saying, just to keep things moving faster.
Okay, I'd rather not do that, because I'd like to give people a couple of weeks to think about it. Even two weeks, I mean, you know...
Yeah, I'm not saying that we have a deadline, but I'm just saying if they get it out sooner, that's, they'll have two full weeks, you know.
Right.
I'm just trying to speed up the process instead of...
Instead of us reviewing what Greg's writing, we're just going to trust, obviously we do entrust, but we're going to trust that he can write it good enough how we want it, and he's just going to put it out there.
So now we're not two weeks from our meeting, we're two weeks from whenever he can get it sent out. Is what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not trying to cut the deadline shorter, I'm just trying to move things along faster so we have a full council sooner.
Arc.
I like the way Jay, what he thinks, but in concept, we're public meeting right now. The word is going to get out anyway. So I don't know how much delay we're going to have. Right?
We're still looking for a motion, by the way.
So Jay's, well, isn't there a motion on the floor?
There was a motion in the second.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, but it was staff bringing this back to council. If we were to do what...
Right.
Jay's suggesting what I'm hearing is, well, what I think I'm hearing is, we would, if you want staff to go ahead with it, we would probably establish a deadline of like, city clerk might shoot me on this, but say noon, noon on Friday, October 1st, the Friday prior to your council meeting. So any letters of interest and resumes could go out in your packets, you could review them. That's maybe a week and a half, if we got it out Wednesday of this week. Too short? You've got to be the judge of that, guys. I should do a special meeting, that would be, and at the meeting October 18th. And just to use that Friday deadline idea, that would be October 15 as a deadline. I'm okay.
Okay, right, because we could still theoretically have the position filled in by the first meeting in November. If you wait much longer than that, then you're into the holidays, and then you might as well wait till April. You know, it's...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, Bill.
I said, I think that's a good plan.
Okay, Bill supports that.
Seeking applications with the understanding, council will review those applications at the second meeting in October.
That's what I'm hearing.
So that's Jay's proposed amendment to the motion that's on the floor, if I understand that right. Does the motion on the floor have staff bringing something back to you next Monday? If I recall right.
That was, so who was the first on that one?
I was.
Tracy, do you accept that?
I certainly do.
Who was the second?
I certainly do. Mark was the second.
Arc? Perfect. Okay, let's go and do it all in favor. Everybody that's in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Perfect.
And aside, council, the good news is we've already had council, we've already had members of the community reach out saying, I would be interested in serving if council's doing an appointment, so. Yep.
Tonight, after you write more.
On to H, election of city council vice president. So we're going to seek out nominations by this council before, obviously, we can vote on anyone. So is there anyone out here that has a nomination of someone else that they want to be vice president? Or them themselves want to be vice president? Tracy.
Nominate Darla Leclair.
Okay. Darla, do you accept that position?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else want to step up to be vice president? Or nominate somebody else? I would nominate Jay Remicker. Jay, do you accept that?
I accept.
Anybody else have any nominations? Okay, Jamie should have had paper in front of everyone. So if you can write your name in there and fold it in half, and she will come pick them up.
Just for color commentary, Mr. Leclair will be texting the city clerk. His vote. Otherwise, the carrier pigeon might not make it from the east side here in time.
For the community, Bill is recovering from surgery. I hope he's doing well, Darla, and we're glad he...
Definitely well, yeah. Thank you.
Four for Darla, four for Jay.
Since we talk about this being dreadlocked, is there a direction as to how we do it again, or do we...
Keep on voting?
You'll change your mind.
Yeah, I doubt if the law provides any direction.
Because there's eight of us.
Let me look.
Bill?
Bill's on the phone.
I voted.
Yeah, that includes...
Yeah, that's how we got the tie, otherwise we'd be uneven. Because we only have eight. I don't know if there's... I don't know how you break a tie on that.
Let me ask both candidates if I could. Do you realize that in this position, given, unfortunately, if anything does happen to Adam, you are automatically going to be the next vice or president of city council? For how long, Adam, would that be?
It'll be the remaining of, to what, April? When we, or May? Whenever we reconvene our positions. End of April.
So are both of you willing to be our city council president, being here every time, every meeting?
I would be.
Yes, Jess.
So we're just waiting on, those of you watching on TV and not the Packer game, we're just waiting on Jack to see if there's anything...
The council shall elect by majority vote. One of the members to act as president and one as vice president.
Oh, we've had, we've... At least on, that was on appointing a new council member, I think. I guess I just throw out, I don't know, help me out, Jack, if somebody else wanted to throw their hat in the ring, and then you...
And there you go.
I was just thinking that, yeah.
Or if somebody wished to withdraw, or if the council collectively, maybe after another vote, stated they would resolve a tie by a coin toss or some arbitrary means. I think that's within your, within your...
Well, let's start with the first one. Does anybody else wish to throw their name in the hat to unbreak this tie?
What could, would that do?
Because then you'd have three, you couldn't really have...
Yeah, but then you have to go between the two. So the third person...
Could end up in the same place, but you might end up someplace else.
Well, but it could, then, since it's 50/50 right now, it could drive the vote to...
Okay, then do we want to vote again? And then if it's still a tie, do you want to do a coin flip? I don't know how else we're breaking a tie.
Do we nominate somebody else?
That's what I just asked for, does anyone else want to be nominated? Mark, would you accept that role?
Only if I do accept that there, I would, I think it could then sway to the other half, because I know which candidate I voted for. And if nobody votes for me, then it's going to automatically force the other candidate as my option. You know, they're both good people. That help, Jack, if I...
But sure.
No, that didn't help.
I don't know, sorry.
Coin flip? Do you want to vote again and then do a coin flip?
Do you want to flip?
Okay, let's do a coin flip.
I'd like to flip.
We'll do the honorary, maybe the city manager should flip because he's unbiased. If you don't have a quarter, I do.
If that's the feeling of the council, I think you're in charge of your own rules of order, so...
Will we vote one more time and then flip a coin?
I think, I thought you were just going to flip. Is there any objection to that procedure?
Okay, do not object.
Do we want to call, or do we want to associate a heads and a tails? And wherever it lands. Is everyone fair with that? Darla's heads, Jay's tails. So wherever it lands on the floor, that's...
I'll flip it, and the city attorney will be the impartial look.
I don't think you can count that.
Hey, the NFL, what do you want?
Do we accept that with, I don't know what it was, but do we accept that? Because, I mean, if you're shaking dice in a bar, then never go. You have to land on the floor. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know who won.
Flip it again.
I have no idea. Heads it is? Hey, Darla Leclair. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much, everyone, for voting. We have H done. Moving on to I. Announcement of council president's appointment of city council member to the Personnel and Finance Committee. I had had a conversation with someone over the weekend in regards to that, and my appointment is Jeff Dulkey. So Jeff Dulkey, welcome to the Personnel and Finance Committee. You're just in time for budget time, which we'll both be learning on the fly. This will be my first one, and Mark chairs that committee, he will guide us right on through. On to Jay, election of council members to committees replacing Kurt Andrews, of which there are three. Branding and Marketing Committee, Business and Industrial Development Committee, and the Community Development Authority. Here again, just to give you a briefing, we could hold off on appointing these until we appoint a new member to council. Not that we put too much on one person's plate here. These are three committees that Kurt was on that we could help with the new, the new appointee that we discover here, probably sometime in October, or we could just go ahead and fill them now.
Just as a note too, typically, I'd say 95% of the time, the BIDC or Business Industrial Development Committee and CDA, as most of you know, meet together concurrently. That's probably the more, if you will, maybe the more pressing of the two, because it actually has decision, final decision-making authority. It's got a loan application up currently, anyway, just throw that out there.
Does that impede their ability to make a decision?
Well, it just, they'll be down one.
I like your idea.
Might increase the likelihood they wouldn't get a quorum, is the only concern.
Is the branding and marketing, isn't Kurt chairman? I mean, do...
Kurt was the chairman as a council member. We don't presently have any citizen member vacancies. We have one member that hasn't been able to attend regularly. I plan to check with that person to see if they wish to continue. Long story short, if they can't, that I would, I'd be back if, and Mr. Andrews had said he'd like to keep serving there, I'd be back with a recommendation, that's your call, of course, as to whether you approve that nomination. But I, I was just sharing that of the two, there are some pending decisions of the BIDC and CDA. They've got a meeting next Tuesday. Probably make it through either way, but of the two, that one is probably a little more pressing.
Okay, so do we want to fill those tonight? Or do we want to hold off until we fill that vacancy? I guess that's going to be the question that's on the board before we go ahead and fill it.
You know, I think that if somebody's only going to be with us until April, there's a learning curve when you get onto any committee. And I think, in branding and marketing, I think somebody could easily step in there. But like you said, the BIDC, CDA, I think we need to fill it, fill it with someone who's really familiar with how we operate and what it is that we do. So I, I think that this evening, if we could go ahead and fill these positions, I think that that would, that would, that would help us in the long run.
Okay. Mark?
It just, I do not want to be in the bid committee only because my wife is on the committee, and I don't think that's right for me. But it's announced the city council. Have to, that way, fine. I like the idea of waiting, but whatever you guys want to do.
Already on that, both of them. BIDC.
How do we want to fill that? Do we want to go ahead and fill it tonight? Do we want, yes?
Yeah, if you can.
Okay, Jay? Fill it tonight?
I think we should wait and see whoever's going to be replaced or filling in, if they want to take any of these positions with them.
Honey?
What?
Do you want to fill these tonight?
Yeah, if we can.
Okay, Bill?
I'll think of a loss as one person off of these committees. Are these committees fairly large? Can they deal without Kurt not being there?
Yeah, one is seven, of the BIDC and CDA, one is seven members, one is nine.
So yes, the answer to that would be, yes, they can.
Okay, well, I think we should wait, I don't know. But the thing is too, we probably should have some experienced people on there, I don't know. Well, I guess we should try to appoint somebody.
Okay, so majority rules there, we should appoint somebody. So it's up to us to, to fill that. So does anyone want to be on the BIDC and CDA? Is there anybody here, knowing that those two work in tandem? Does anybody want to be in that committee that is here tonight?
What time does it meet?
Typically at 5:15, regular meetings are on the fourth Tuesday. Sometimes we have special meetings, but, like tomorrow, I think that's the third Tuesday? It's on the fourth? Yeah, there is a meeting tomorrow, as a matter of fact. But typically, on Tuesdays, normally the fourth Tuesday, 5:15.
Darla, are you already on one of those?
I was on BIDC, CDA for quite a while. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but memory, my memory seems to tell me that it was in both, both capacities.
Yeah, typically, the council reps have be... Yeah, typically, the council reps have been on both committees. Again, BIDC has some responsibilities, CDA has some, but they both focus on economic development. They overlap, so the seven, by practice, the seven CDA members are always, have always been on the BIDC. And then there's been two more, generally citizen members, that rounded out the BIDC.
I don't know, I mean, if you're comfortable with me going back on BIDC, CDA, I could, I could easily do that.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, see none, we're going to appoint Darla Leclair to BIDC and the CDA. Branding and Marketing. Is there anyone that has an interest in the branding and marketing? And when do they meet?
So, and, and on call, essentially.
Okay, so it's more of an on-call, but usually probably once a month, maybe not in the summer? Okay. You hear on that already? Anybody else want to join in the branding and marketing committee? That is here tonight.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Let's go back over to BIDC, CDA. The meeting is tomorrow, it's on the fourth, third?
This month it's on, I think that's the third. It's...
Oh, tomorrow is a special meeting, because I was going to say EAB.
We've got a, we've got an offer on one of the lots at the Sandy Bay subdivision that requires, the deadline to respond requires CDA action.
Okay, so tomorrow, there might be a little bit of a conflict, but from then on out, I wouldn't have any conflict? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, okay.
Back to branding and marketing, anyone want to fill that void?
Looked back, and it's been two, it looks like there's been three meetings this year. And two have been on a Wednesday, and one was on a Thursday.
Okay, so they don't really meet every month. It looks like they meet so far three times a year and we're over halfway. Yes, Mark?
Can I, or maybe, but can I suggest we put Kurt on that meet, on that committee? Is he on there? Is his membership, uh, allowed only as president?
Like I said earlier, right now, there are not any citizen vacancies on the committee.
Uh, I, I would suggest that we maybe consider adding him back on because he's been so positive in the movement of this, and he does so much work for the city and we've seen the results. I'd suggest we put Kurt on.
So that would take an ordinance amendment where we would have to change the makeup of that committee, adding another citizen and taking away a city council member, which would leave us with one council member? Is that within bylaws? Because I think they do spend tax money, do they not?
Mm-hmm. Their budget is, well, they spend tax money, their budget is subject to approval either by the city council or the Room Tax Commission if it's room tax money, because the Room Tax Commission has their own statutory.
I just didn't know if there was a statutory requirement to have two council members on for that or just one.
No, no, but you're right.
Because I know it can't be zero. I know it has to be one, but is it one or two?
Yeah.
I don't.
I don't know that there's a statutory, because honestly, branding and marketing is a committee of our own creation.
Mm-hmm.
It's not like a CDA or a library board or a plan commission where there's a state statute. Uh, you're not going to find a branding and marketing committee in every city. What I'd like, and you're, you're absolutely right, Adam, I mean, it would, right now, it would require amending the ordinance because the city council just earlier this year took what was a special kind of ad hoc council-approved committee and gave it structure, put it in ordinance. Mark, I could either bring, we could bring an ordinance amendment back if you, if council wants that at the next meeting. Again, I can also talk to one of the members who's been unable to attend, been meaning to do it before now, and see if, if by the next meeting there'd be a citizen vacancy that you could fill with Kurt. I'd urge you to keep two council slots on there. I think it's at your discretion, because I think Darla, you had stepped aside from that committee.
I, that's because.
As a council member.
That was, right, but that was because he wanted me to start chairing it, and that wasn't in my wheelhouse, so I, I begged off of that, that just is not my forte. But, um, I've been on branding and marketing, I, I was on it for a very long time.
Yeah.
But I, I think that I like your idea of approaching this one citizen member who hasn't been able to really attend meetings and see, see what's going on with that, and that would free up a position for Kurt, because I know Kurt wants to stay involved.
Bill, do you have any interest?
Not really.
Okay. Okay, I mean, otherwise, if we have no interest here, we can always, um, bring it back up when we fill that void of our vacant council member.
We can, yeah, carry a vacancy.
Correct. We'll carry it forward and we'll appoint them to that because they won't have really any other committee to be on for the remainder of that. All right. Let's move on to K. Consideration of scheduling a special joint meeting with Central Park West 365 Planning Committee as requested by the committee. The recommended motion is to set the meeting for 6:00 PM Thursday, September 30th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Adam.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Hearing none, the only thing I have, I'll add in at the end here, I cannot make that, that day is booked for me personally, but if everyone else can make it, good, I can always pass along my thoughts as I have in the past. I can do that through email and, uh, I'll ask Greg just to make sure that the committee receives that.
Sure. And they did recently, and as you noted in the minutes, they tried to respond fairly specifically, although we, we missed one point on the cabin issue, but we, we can handle it in that manner.
Okay. Uh, we can do an all in favor, and that's, uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone, anyone opposed? Okay, perfect. On to 11, for information only, Greg.
Again, just to recap, there's a work session next week, Monday, uh, fairly full agenda for that one. Personnel and Finance Committee, uh, Jeff, welcome to that, and their next meeting is September 29th, next week, Wednesday. That will kick off budget review, I believe, with the debt service fund and, uh, one of the other tax-supported funds, might be library, so we'll, uh, we'll circulate again.
Next seven meetings, Wednesdays in a row, too, so.
So, yeah, that's, uh, that's the kickoff meeting on budget. Um, obviously, you've got a, you've got a council regular meeting on the fourth, and Personnel and Finance rolls around again a week later on October 6th. That's, and of course, now the September 30th special meeting with the Park Planning Committee. That's all I've got.
Okay, I do know we need a closed session. Is there anything we're going to have to come back into open and vote on?
Uh, there is that potential.
There is the potential. Okay. The city council reserves the right to enter into closed section, session per Wisconsin statute 19 dot 851E in deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tonight, there'll be a discussion of possible city assistance to economic development projects, discuss purchase of former Hamilton property, and to discuss the possible sale of city-owned Paragon property. Looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Bonnie, second, uh, roll call, Jamie.
Bill LeClaire.
Are you with us, Bill?
Aye.
Jay Remicker. Bonnie Shamilis.
Aye.
Adam O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Uh, Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dulkey.
Aye.
Tracy Koch.
Aye.
Darla LeClaire.
Aye.
Just, yeah, just to further clarify the record in case somebody wants to run down and be here when the council gets out of closed session, the one potential action item would be on the, the third point, the possible agreement for sale of the Paragon property. I don't anticipate on the others.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a, I mean, a break if I need.